Councillors, please stand.
Almighty God, we, the representative citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respect to elders past and present. Please.
I declare, excuse me, I declare the meeting open. I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal interests and conflicts of interest where relevant, and the requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Councillors, are there any apologies? I believe there are no apologies. Councillors, the minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,616th meeting held on Tuesday 12th, May 2020 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Second please. It's been moved by councillor Landis, taken by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,616th meeting of council held on the 12th of May 2020 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
And those against, no, and raise your hands. Thank you, the ayes have it. I'll now move to question time. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Chair of any of the committees? I see councillor Davis.
Thank you Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, as restrictions start easing around the city and suburbs, can you please update the chamber on what council facilities are opening to the public and any other initiatives that council has announced?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor for the question. Certainly, we've all been excited to see the stage reopening of our local facilities, whether they are playgrounds, outdoor gyms, other park facilities, and some of the council facilities that we unfortunately had to close as well, such as libraries. There's certainly been a great response from the community. And in the main, those facilities that have been reopened are being used sensibly by residents. I want to thank them for that. Obviously, we need to all keep remembering the importance of social distancing, even for those facilities that are open. And in the main, people are doing the right thing and we certainly appreciate that. The ongoing requirement to adhere to social distancing and take those hygiene measures means that we can continue to have the stage reopening of facilities. And so we're looking very much forward to the next round of openings. And they include further opening of libraries. At the moment, as councillors would be aware, people can drop off books that they have borrowed and also pick up books that they have ordered. But there's not the ability at this stage to go in and browse in the library. So we're looking forward to in the future being able to open libraries up for further public access. Our community halls are open, but they're limited to 10 people as per the state requirements. And at this stage, we've been unable to open our swimming pools. And the lessies are very much letting us know that it is at this point not viable to open all pools with a 10-person limit. So we're looking forward to being able to open further facilities as the relaxation in the restrictions allows us to do. And it's just part of that excitement that we all feel that our economy and our life is starting that journey back to normal. There is a long way to go. And whether it's council facilities, whether it's businesses out there, whether it's community groups, there's still a lot of, I guess, distance to be covered in that journey that we're all taking. Now, it's been very well covered, the support that we've been providing to local businesses, whether it's through our local procurement activities, whether it's through the $7.9 million support package for businesses across the city with the waiver of fees from council. And also with residents with the ability to defer rates for up to nine months. And we've seen well over $30 million worth of deferrals provided across the city for different types of property owners that are facing difficulty. But we know that our community and sporting clubs are also struggling with their own challenges. And in particular, sporting clubs. We've been doing a lot of work over many weeks with our sporting clubs. And it's been interesting to see the opposition jump on the bandwagon late last week when they finally realised it's an issue. But we have been working with our clubs for weeks and weeks and weeks to understand the challenges that they're going through and how we can help. And the big feedback that we received was about utility charges. There were feedbacks such as electricity and water charges, which are really making it difficult. We know that many of these clubs have had a reduction in their income, in many cases to almost nothing. But at the same time, the bills keep coming in. And when you are responsible for maintaining playing fields, you can't just stop doing that because the overall impact and the cost to get the field back up to scratch again, if you do that, would be prohibitive and would be letting an asset downgrade to a point where it's just unfeasible. So they needed to keep watering their field, they need to keep the electricity on, and these are the big factors. So we, through our communications and feedback with local sporting groups, we were told that almost 80% of sporting groups that had those fields are struggling with their utility costs. So I was pleased to announce today that we would provide a one-off $5,000 grant to around 150 community sporting groups across Brisbane that are responsible for maintaining their fields on council land. And that $5,000 will go directly towards the QUU bill, the Queensland Urban Utilities Bill. It will cover all components of the bill. And this is building on a similar announcement that we made during the drought last year. I think it was around September, from memory, where we announced a programme to support sporting clubs through that drought period.
Excuse me, Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Are there any further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, my question is for the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, as we've just heard today, you've dusted off and rehashed a nine-month-old announcement of water rebates for sporting clubs. This is a very small commitment of up to $5,000 out of your $3.1 billion budget, which simply will not save many of these clubs from going under. Clubs have been very clear that they have significant ongoing costs like insurance, electricity and maintenance, but have no revenue to pay for these costs. Community organisations like the Zilme Community Centre, Nunda Community Centre and Belimba Community Centre are facing the grim reality of folding on your watch. Lord Mayor, when will you outline an actual plan which includes significant financial support to all of our community organisations and sporting clubs who've been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question councillor Cook. And it's great to see your interest after many, many weeks, suddenly in this late last week. We have actually been working with clubs for weeks and weeks, in fact for months, to understand their needs going forward. And if you had talked to the clubs like we had, you would understand that the big pressure on them right now are two things which relate directly to the state government, and they are water and electricity. We know that water, 60-plus percent of the water bill is directly impacted by the state government's bulk water charge. That is something that flows straight back to the state government and is controlled directly by the state government. We know that electricity is directly impacted by the decisions of the state government. We know that electricity generation and policies relating to electricity pricing are controlled at the state government level. We know, for example, that pensioners in Queensland get a special subsidy to help them pay their electricity bills. And so councillor Cook, rather than playing petty politics, I would suggest that you pick up the phone to your colleagues in George Street and talk to the people who have the real power to provide relief on these state government-controlled charges. Whether it's the state government bulk water cut or whether it is electricity, the state government has direct control over these issues and we need them to step up and assist in areas that they control. Now, council has delivered when it comes to the areas that we control. We, as landholders and landlords in these different community clubs, have waived all fees and charges on those sporting groups. We have done that and we did that early. We stepped in straight away and said, we're not going to be charging anything to these sporting clubs. So where we have the levers to pull, we have pulled those levers and taken decisive action very quickly to remove council burdens on the clubs. But when it comes to water, you well know that 60-plus percent of the water bill goes straight back to the state government in state bulk water charges. And that is a massive burden on clubs and organisations across Brisbane. And the state government has the power to do something here. Now, I understand that their budget is in peril of situation, but even some temporary relief from the state government in this way would be a big help for those sporting clubs. We will continue to provide support in the areas that we control. We will continue to work with clubs to understand their needs and how we can help. We will continue to provide targeted support. And I think it is absolutely disgraceful the way that you've been playing politics in recent days with clubs that are genuinely struggling. And if you were genuine about this, you would pick up the phone to your colleagues at George Street and get some help from the people that can provide the most help. Because they are the people that are contributing most to the pressure on those clubs through their water bills and electricity bills. They are state-controlled matters and the state has the power to provide instant relief here. And as I said, it doesn't have to be on an ongoing basis, but right now, in a targeted way, they can provide real support, just in the same way that we have done as a council. Now, we've announced a million dollars' worth of support today. There will be more support coming and we will do what we can in a targeted way using the levers that we have to pull. But it is really disappointing councillor Cook that you choose to play politics with this issue. These are clubs that provide such important support for the community. And if you were genuine, you would put party politics aside and you would offer to help. You would offer to pick up the phone to those colleagues that you work so closely with, whether it's Dipharma, whether it's other people that you have close relationships with.
Lord Mayor, can I just stop you there for a moment? Can I ask you and all councillors to refer all comments through the chair and to refer to other councillors in the third person, please? Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, through you to councillor Cook. If she was genuine, she would do that. But no, as we've seen week after week, unfortunately, Labour councillors choose to play politics with important community issues. And it is not something that the community appreciates. But what they do appreciate is when you pick up the phone to your colleagues and help with the people that can provide the most help. And in this case, it is clearly the state government who are imposing massive costs on clubs that are struggling through water and utility bills. And we will continue, as I said, to do what we can to help, but we don't control the biggest levers here. The major part of the water bill goes straight to the state. And electricity charges are something that are in the realm of the state government.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Are there further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, we have just heard from the Lord Mayor about Brisbane City Council's plans for recovery of our city. Can you please elaborate on how this council is planning to get our city back up and running?
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hammond for the question. And yes, thank you for giving the opportunity to update the chamber on some of the steps that we are taking to get this city back on track. That is our focus right now, as you just heard from the Lord Mayor. It is absolutely vital in the coming weeks and months, we are supporting our businesses through the next phase of recovery. As restrictions begin to ease, we are going to start seeing more and more parts of the city reopen. And already, we've noticed more traffic on roads and the foot traffic around the CBD and our local shopping precincts as well. In the CBD, we see residents returning to work, getting out to their local shops, cafes and restaurants across the suburbs. The next phase we will be stepping into will really focus on carefully reopening the economy and stimulating those local jobs. As I've spoken many times in this chamber over the last couple of years, small to medium enterprises make up a significant portion of Brisbane's workforce. Businesses are looking to government for clear guidance and support. They're looking to us also and council for leadership and direction as well. And that is why we have actually announced the multimillion-dollar business relief package that the Lord Mayor was just talking about. We're offering great opportunities for businesses of any shape and size to diversify their skill set and better their position as they come out of the lockdown restrictions that we have been seeing. One thing we do know, however, is knowledge is power. This is how we plan to give business owners and operators the confidence to reopen and get back on their feet, to ensure that they are actually well-prepared and have the skills to manage this transition. We've actually partnered with some of the best minds in the business and around the country to deliver some free online workshops and webinars. The focus has been on empowering businesses. There is a variety of different workshops coming up and I encourage all councillors to get online and have a look at what's available through the economic development website platform to learn and to share with their local businesses these workshops. Everything from digital marketing, cybersecurity, people management, even back to basics with getting on top of business, cash flows and finances. We're extremely fortunate recently to have a rather well-known face in our Business in Brisbane Facebook group, Mr Tom Potter, founder of pizza chain Eagle Boys. We had a great turnout online of people wanting to learn about what he knows around the messages of leadership and knowledge within business as well. He also spoke about the importance of having a network of support to connect with and share your experiences and advice. And this is something we will be rolling out more of over the coming months. The Business in Brisbane Facebook group is quickly gaining traction, seeing almost 100 new members daily over this past week, bringing the total membership list now to nearly 2,000. This group provides exactly that when it comes to networking, a chance for council to connect and support businesses right across Brisbane and an avenue from them to give us feedback. And we are hearing consistently the same thing. Small businesses want even more opportunities to learn and to grow. And on this side of the chamber, I have to say, the administration is listening. We know that Brisbane is built in our local economy and we know that we are acting on our commitment to build Australia's most business-friendly city. As mentioned earlier, coming back to the CBD is a very large part of that because on top of the businesses and the people that work in the CBD, there are a lot of small to medium enterprises that rely on that foot traffic, whether it's in retail or food and beverage or recreation. You would have seen from yesterday, we switched the parking meters back on and the King George Square and Wickham Terrace car park rates went back to normal. This was not about revenue raising, this was about turnover. It was about supporting our businesses in the CBD to get people back in here and seeing it as an option for the spend if they want to go out and start doing their shopping again. We have been making sure that the council's website is up to date with everything that people can see and do around the city and things that have been there for a long time that people may not be aware of. Through our What's On platform, you can have a look at the laneways artwork right through our laneways in the CBD, from Burnett Lane, Fish Lane in South Brisbane, Edison Lane, Hutton Lane, Giffen Lane, Eagle Lane. The artworks that Brisbane has installed over the last few years are even more valuable now for people to get out and about and see what is in their CBD as they're trying to get out of their restrictions as well. Add to that our beautiful public art trails with our heritage trails on Expo 88, our contemporary artwork along the riverside. There's so much to see and do and support.
Further questions?
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thanks Chair. My question is to councillor Marks, the chairperson of the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee. Councillor Marks, damming figures released last year by your administration showed that there were over 700 dangerous footpaths awaiting repair. This represented around 2,000 kilometres of broken footpaths in every suburb in Brisbane. How many of these footpaths have been repaired in the last year?
Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Cassidy for the question. Footpaths are an interesting one in that, as you will be aware, all footpaths are listed for repair and they go on a list. And in fact, during the last election, when I walked every single footpath in my ward in some weeks, more than 70 kilometres of footpath, we were able to log all the jobs that did need repairing, which then, of course, ended up that my ward had the most footpaths that needed repairing. But the issue I have with that is if it's not on a list, it can't be repaired. And that's one thing, as you well know, council officers, the first thing they do is make safe a footpath so it is safe. It might not necessarily look pretty, it might not necessarily match exactly what was there because generally what they'll come along with, they have a grinding machine and they have some bitumen, which I've seen the officers working on it myself. They grind the bit that's sticking up and then they will refill that bit with bitumen. So it's all about making it safe. It's not necessarily about replacing and putting it back to exactly the way it was before. So we make it safe first, then it goes on the list to be repaired. And that's the list that potentially, I'm guessing you're talking about, is that the officers then will go back out there and make that footpath into what you would call a reasonable state, I would suggest. And that list varies from time to time, from month to month. Sometimes the officers will get through four, five, 600 footpaths in a year. Sometimes it won't be quite that much. But the reality is that this administration has spent more money than ever before on footpaths and will continue to do so as required. And the Lord Mayor has said that on many occasions, that there was not a limited number. So as I've said before, we've allocated over $13 million for repairing to footpath maintenance and that was a financial year for 2018, 19. And that's in addition to the over $9.5 million allocated to footpath reconstruction that was this financial year. So every year, more and more money goes into the budget to repair and fix footpaths.
Do I have a point of order?
Yes, thank you. Just on relevance, it was a really good question and I'm interested in the answer. Office Endurement 700, how many have been fixed in the past year? That was the question.
Thank you. And councillor Marks has used less than half of her time and provided quite a bit of detail about the process of identification, how these things are worked out. And I thought that her answer was relevant. So councillor Marks.
Thank you Chair and I appreciate the point of order. I understand that there is a question about how many exactly have been fixed. And I can tell you, I don't have that figure right in front of me right at this very moment. As I've said to you before, I personally walked my footpaths in my ward that I knew were on the list. And as they're getting repaired and fixed, I'm ticking them off my list. Potentially, maybe if you felt like doing the same thing, you could do that yourself as well, councillor Cassidy. But certainly, you know, there's over 5,000 kilometres of footpaths and shared paths in Brisbane. And each one of those, every time, there's more and more added to the list for repairing. So as far as the exact figure of how many have been fixed, I don't have that at my fingertips right at the moment. But I'm certainly happy to ask officers to get that information for you. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Hutton.
My question is for the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor McLaughlin. Councillor McLaughlin, I understand that a petition has been presented in the State Parliament demanding that the government instruct Brisbane City Council to cease construction on the road network around the Inner City South Secondary College due to the impact on pedestrians and cyclists. Can the Chair please answer whether council can deliver on this demand?
Councillor McLaughlin.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Hutton for the question. This college sure has been in the news recently for all sorts of reasons. I did see that petition lodged on the 27th of April in the Queensland Parliament. It says in part, and I quote, "The new intersection of Gladstone Road and TJ Doyle Memorial Drive at Dutton Park to facilitate access to the Queensland Government's new Inner City South State Secondary College is unsafe and unsuitable for people walking, cycling and seeking to access public transport. Work is currently underway by Brisbane City Council according to a plan which does not support the Queensland Walking Strategy. And your petitioners request the House to direct Brisbane City Council to cease work on the project." End quote. Now, Mr Chair, that would be an interesting directive. As this school has a ministerial infrastructure designation, council did not have the ability to refuse or impose conditions of approval on the development, as it may under a traditional development assessment process. So a short answer to your question councillor Hutton is no, this is not a council project. It is a state government project being delivered by the state under its special ministerial designation for pushing through school redevelopments without council approval. Infrastructure designation for the new Inner City South State Secondary College was granted by the then Minister for State Development, Manufacturing, Infrastructure and Planning, Cameron Dick, in September 2019. Council is involved to the extent that it issues road and footpath closure permits, including the management and approval of temporary lane and footpath closures for the project. And council has been consulted over the design of the road network changes and has provided advice to TMR. Several concerns have been raised by officers and they include, but aren't limited to, and I'll read some of these out, and I quote, "The raised pedestrian zebra crossing on Grantham Street to the west of Annolly Road does not conform to ostroads and will cause traffic destined for the school's stop and drop to queue back into Annolly Road, disrupting the arterial road function. A central refuge island should be provided to enable a two-stage crossing for pedestrians across Grantham Street at the Annolly Road-Grantham Street intersection. Raised pedestrian zebra crossing on Grantham Street to the east of New Street is not supported as vehicles turning into the proposed driveway one will have to stop on and begin the right-turn movement on top of the platform. A manned school crossing on Grantham Street in the vicinity of the main school entrance would be a preferred solution. The traffic assessment, impact assessment, the TIA, does not conform to the BCC requirements to provide an assessment at the day of opening in 2020 for each stage, ultimately in 2023 or 10-year future horizon through to 2033. Therefore, it is difficult to assess the actual impact of the proposed design on the road network." End of those quotes from the officers. So, Mr Chair, the issue highlights a general disregard provided by ministerial infrastructure designation for schools for the impact on our road network. And there are plenty of other examples. Here are some. At Fortitude Valley State Secondary College, the Fortitude Valley Neighbourhood Plan had a connection-
A connecting pay policy.
The Fortitude Valley Neighbourhood Plan had a connection between Brook Street and Green Square Close. This hasn't been incorporated into the design, so ignored by the state. Over at West End School, there's a parking shortfall, 53 spots planned, 96 were required, no change to the design. At the Queensland Academy for Science, Mathematics and Technology, the expansion works at To Wong. The new parking only catered for additional staff, not for the existing parking shortfall. The shortfall still exists, very poor mass indeed. Over at Fitzgibbon Catholic School, council supported the entry and exit movements on the major road frontage to the school at Beams Road. However, an expressed concern that cars should be prevented from performing a right-hand turn on a major road by incorporating a raised central medium to prohibit such manoeuvres has so far been ignored. Mr Chair, as you can see the trend here with these state government approvals. We raised legitimate concerns in the design phase and we get ignored. The outcomes that are-
Like us when it comes to council DIA.
No objections, please.
The outcomes that the petitioners on the ICSSC have identified should be redirected to the state. The state government should listen to our experienced officers. We can work with them to define those, not after they've been-
Further questions councillor Cassidy?
Thanks Chair. My question is to councillor Allen, the Chair of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee. Councillor Allen, given the unprecedented situation due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the federal government has announced a $320 billion economic support package. The Queensland Government has automatically provided a $200 rebate on people's water and electricity bills. Yet the only financial assistance which Brisbane City Council is offering ratepayers is $100,000 in waived interest penalties, which as the Lord Mayor would say is pathetic. Will you today give a commitment that there will be no increases in people's rates for the next financial year?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Cassidy for his question. For a fellow who's been in the chamber for some time, he would appreciate that at this point in time, we're in the process of undertaking our budget development process. Clearly, rates and similar things are dealt with as that process progresses. The point that I would make is that the Lord Mayor has already announced a raft of concessions for residents- for residents in Brisbane and in particular, the decision to defer rates for a period up to nine months. At this point in time, approximately five thousand three hundred ratepayers have taken advantage of that deferral, of which approximately three thousand eight hundred are residential ratepayers. So we are conscious of the pain that many residents are feeling at the moment. And obviously, to support that, we've provided a deferral on those rates. Now, it's interesting that you should talk of rates, councillor Cassidy, because while it's been a little while since you guys have been in administration, it's worth noting that under the last Labor administration, you increased rates by six percent.
Under every L N P.
Seven years. So councillor Cassidy, don't forget.
Twelve years under the L N P.
So.
What was the impact?
Long.
In the context of the budget and what the results might be in terms of rates, you can rest assured we are acutely aware of the concerns and the pains that have been faced by the residents of Brisbane. We are acutely aware of the importance of continuing to provide the basic services that the residents of Brisbane expect council to provide. It is a very delicate balancing act between the revenues that we receive and the expectations of the community around the services that will be delivered. I can assure you that we are incredibly sensitive to the rates charges and how that impacts the community. But in terms of an answer to your question, councillor Cassidy, you'll have to wait until the seventeenth of June.
All right, it's free.
Further questions? Excuse me, further questions, councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of Public and Active Transport, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, in September last year, this council announced plans for a new ferry terminal at the Howard Smith Wools precinct to further enhance the ferry network and provide more travel opportunities for residents and visitors. Can you please outline council's vision for this new piece of transport infrastructure and other ferry terminals in our network?
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair, and thanks very much to councillor Owen for the question. I know what a keen public transport commuter councillor Owen is and that she often enjoys catching the city cat just to enjoy the views from the magnificent Brisbane River.
He likes taxis.
No, no objections, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. Look, council is continuing to focus on delivering major public transport services for Brisbane residents. We want to provide safe and efficient travel options to get residents home quicker and safer while they can enjoy our beautiful city. Investment in our ferry terminals has played a major role in this. Now, a reminder for all councils that our fleet comprises twenty-two city cats, nine monohull vessels that operate along twenty-five terminals through the Brisbane River. Eleven million dollars has been invested towards ferry terminal upgrades in twenty nineteen, twenty, with the upgrade of the Guyat Park Ferry Terminal completed in December last year. Council has committed seventy million dollars over the next four years to upgrade and build new terminals. And these terminals, as well as being of a flood resilient design, will also be compliant with the Disability Standards for Accessible Public Transport two thousand and two Act and the Disability Discrimination Act nineteen ninety-two. Now, this includes the upgrade of South Bank and a brand-new terminal at the Howard Smith Wools. This project adds to council's network of twenty-five ferry terminals and a suite of new river initiatives that council is rolling out in line with council's Rivers Edge strategy. This new terminal will enhance accessibility and precinct integration to encourage the use of public transport associated with one of Brisbane's premier recreation and lifestyle precincts. As COVID restrictions continue to ease, Howard Smith Wools has reiterated to council just how important this infrastructure will be for this precinct and their traders. It will ensure that residents and visitors have easy access to this public space. The new state-of-the-art terminal has only been made possible through a substantial contribution to council from Howard Smith Wools. Final agreement and funding arrangements between council and Howard Smith Wools was executed in February twenty twenty. This will provide extra connectivity to the New Farm Riverwalk and surrounding suburbs such as Fortitude Valley and Kangaroo Point through to the Story Bridge. There were a number of factors that council took into consideration when selecting the terminal location, including accessibility, geotechnical engineering and the tidal conditions in the area. The terminal has been designed to blend into the precinct and preserve the prominence of the heritage structures along Howard Smith Wools. It will include best boat features and finishes that complement the surrounding built form and a modified roof to enable improved views. The scale and depth of the pontoon will allow view lines over and through the terminal across the Brisbane River. As I mentioned, the development application has been lodged and a decision is anticipated in the coming months. We expect to award this successful construction tender in July or August of this year. Now, turning to the South Bank Ferry Terminal upgrade, the current terminal consists of two separate pontoons and they've been operational since nineteen ninety-six, so quite old now. It's an important piece of infrastructure providing access to the South Bank Parklands and the South Brisbane area. And this upgrade will result in a change from two separate pontoons to one larger single pontoon. The upgraded terminal will consolidate future city cat and city hopper services. This means improved access for passengers by offering a single arrival and departure point and removing the need for a six hundred metre walk to the next terminal. And the South Bank Ferry Terminal Development Application was decided and approved in March twenty twenty while council was in recess. Tenders for the Howard Smith Wools and South Bank Terminals closed on the eighth of May and we're very pleased to be now one step closer to construction. Local benefit weightings in the request for tenders has increased to thirty percent to help boost our local economy. And both Howard Smith Wools and South Bank Terminals will be similar in look and feel to the recently completed New Farm and Guyat Park Terminals, completed in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen respectively. These terminals were constructed using a more simplified approach to flood resilience by reorienting the gangways parallel to the river flows. Of course, our investment in transport infrastructure is supported by the delivery of a new generation of double-decker city cats. The design was based closely on the first double-decker city cat Yogura, which began passenger services on the Brisbane River in November twenty nineteen. City cat's an iconic feature of the Brisbane River, servicing the twenty-two kilometre stretch of river from North Shore, Hamilton to St Lucia. Around five million passengers choose to travel by ferry or city cat each and every year. And it's great that we're moving closer to construction of these important pieces of transport infrastructure for our city.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Further questions, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to councillor Marks, the Chair of the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee. Councillor Marks, new footpaths listed in council's budget schedules, schedule forty-four, have blown out in recent years. These are the streets and roads that have no sealed footpaths. Over the past few months, people have rightly noticed how poor Brisbane's footpaths have become in the last decade or so. There are many missing links and some streets have well-worn paths but no concrete. In the last year, these schedule forty-four projects, which had completion dates listed in most cases for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, have now been pushed out to twenty thirty-five, thirty-six. Why is your administration delaying the construction of new footpaths by over ten years?
Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair, and I sound to councillor Cassidy for the question. I'm unsure what schedule he's referring to. He's mentioned schedule forty-four, something about footpaths for twenty thirty-five or something. I'm actually not sure of what that schedule is or what that list is that he's referring to. I do know that as a local councillor in my own ward, if I have areas of what I would call connectivity, where there's pathways that are worn through that obviously need a footpath, then I put them in for a submission for whether that's either capital listing or I get my officers to do a costing for them to do to pay out of my parks and footpath trust fund that the Lord Mayor gives almost a half a million dollars to every single year. So I mean, that's as a councillor, that we have to log those jobs or apply for those footpaths to be constructed. You know, with capital projects, there's more than nine million dollars is listed in the budget book. So the waiting time can be, from when it's listed to when it's actually done, can be more than a year, depending on if it's put in the budget or not. But as I said, I really don't understand or know what the list is that he's referring to in this schedule forty-four. So I'm happy to have a look at that and see what the councillor is referring to. But just to answer his previous question that I said I'd find an answer for, there've been one thousand four hundred and ninety-two footpath maintenance jobs completed in the past twelve months.
Marks, can you hear me? Oh, you're not on my screen and I need you to come back. All right, now.
Okay, sorry.
I shouldn't have tolerated that, but from this point on, if you are speaking, we have to be able to see you. Okay, all councillors, please continue your answer. And please keep your video on, councillor Marks.
Why don't we just meet back in the chamber?
Is that a question for me or the Chair?
No, it wasn't a question, it was a statement.
Oh, okay.
Councillor Marks, but I must insist, this is something that I must insist for all councils. If you are speaking, that all councillors must be able to see you in this forum. Please, councillor Marks.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Yes, so as I was saying, the schedule forty-four is for the footpaths funded through the Suburban Enhancement Fund. So I don't understand where this list is that councillor Cassidy was talking about, where he said it's ten, fifteen years of blowing out. So I'm happy to find out what he's talking about. But as I said, with footpaths in my own ward, if there's an area that needs a footpath for whatever reason, whether it's connectivity or whether it's what I would call a goat track and that other, plenty of people are using it, you listed for construction. Now, you've got a number of ways of doing that, as councillor Cassidy would know. I mean, he's been a councillor almost as long as I have in this place. So you've got two ways. You put it through your capital budget listing or you put it through your suburban enhancement fund. First thing you've got to do is go to your offices and ask them to get a quote for you. How much a footpath is going to cost? I mean, that process hasn't changed in any way, shape or form. And I also just wanted to mention the previous question he asked me about how many footpaths. There've been one thousand four hundred and ninety-two footpath maintenance jobs completed in the past twelve months. So that's from the first of May two thousand nineteen through to the thirtieth of April twenty twenty. I hope that answers your question, councillor Cassidy.
Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, during the period of imposed restrictions, council officers continued with the delivery of council projects with a suite of parks and precincts now ready to be open. Can you please update the chamber on where these new facilities can be accessed?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, thanks to councillor Mackay for the question. So last weekend, new facilities across the city, including parks, playgrounds, multi-game courts, skate parks and outdoor gyms, were opened in line with stage one of the roadmap to easing restrictions. Over the past few months, we have continued to work and deliver eleven new playgrounds and five new outdoor gyms, which has helped to secure local jobs, stimulate the local economy and give residents something to look forward to. The new facilities will provide more opportunities for residents to get outside and be active and healthy. Now, as a mother of a young child, I understand from personal experience how hard it has been to tell children that they can't go to the playground. So it's wonderful that this simple joy has been restored for our families. I know a lot of residents were looking forward to being able to get back outside and enjoy all our parks have to offer this past weekend. And I'm pleased that council had a range of new equipment on offer for people of all ages and abilities to use. The new facilities are spread right across Brisbane suburbs and include playgrounds in Bald Hills, Cinnamon Park, Maruka, Cooperoo in my own ward and many more, as well as upgrades to sports fields and precincts at both Nunda and West End. Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinar and I opened the Davies Park redevelopment on Thursday after more than five months of work on the precinct. The two point nine million dollar upgrade completed at Davies Park includes a new multi-use games area with skate facilities and a brand-new multi-use court, while a new volleyball court in Boyd Park at Nunda opened for the first time last weekend. In addition to Davies Park and Boyd Park, council has also been continuing to work on other sport precinct upgrades which are nearing completion. At Bill Brown Reserve in Fitzgibbon and Wakely District Sports Park, the finishing touches are being completed and will open in the coming months as the restrictions ease. With more people anticipated to start moving around Brisbane with the easing of restrictions, it is important that residents continue to adhere to the social distancing measures in place and help protect the community, especially while still staying active and healthy. I know that many parks were understandably busy on the weekend, but from what I saw, people were doing the right thing. The Brisbane community has done such a great job in keeping each other safe, so let's keep it up. Brisbane has more than twenty-one hundred parks and green spaces, including more than two hundred and seventy with barbecues and a hundred and fifty with outdoor gyms. There's plenty of opportunities to find somewhere to picnic, play and exercise outside. So if you arrive at a park or a playground and it seems a bit busy, why not visit another park in your area? We'll continue to be guided by the federal government and Queensland Health and we're following their expert health advice to help minimise the transmission of coronavirus. As I said, council maintains over twenty-one hundred parks across the city and we're improving and creating more green spaces all the time. One of the things residents love about our city is our great climate and improving our parks and recreation areas is another way we're making Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. We're not just delivering new parks and playgrounds though, we're also enhancing our city lookouts and foreshore areas and ensuring great facilities are available for community sport. In fact, our city has more than six thousand hectares of urban parkland for residents and visitors. But we're always looking for ways to find the right balance between recreation, conservation and restoration of our natural areas. And that's because we know that the best way to teach the next generation to value nature is to share it with them. So the full list of new parks and upgraded parks that were officially opened to the public on Saturday is as follows. For the playgrounds, Canterbury Park, Bald Hills, Canumbra Street Park, Cooperoo, Settlers Park, Cinnamon Park, Alpharinga Park, Robertson, Bedello Street Park, Eight Mile Plains, Alexander Park, Maruka, Rollinson Park, Yoronga, Turley Street Park, Fairfield, Sherwood Arboretum at Sherwood, Daryl Roberts Park, Coopers Plains and Ed Quepa Park at Oxley. With the outdoor gyms, the new ones open are Lacy Road Park at Castle Dine, Patria Street Park, Nudgee, Canterbury Park at Bald Hills, Waterfront Park, Newstead, Bradbury Park, Cherm Side. And the sports fields and court precincts opened were Boyd Park at Nunda and Davies Park at West End. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Cunningham, your time's expired. That concludes question time. Councillors, I now draw your attention to the consideration of committee reports, please. The Establishment and Coordination Committee.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I seek leave to suspend so much of standing orders to enable me to move.
Now, councillor Johnson, have you distributed the resolution by email?
I haven't actually moved it yet and I haven't been ready to go.
Of course, but also I don't want to waste time. So have you got it ready to go?
Yes, I do.
All right, well, go ahead.
Thank you. Generally, you've got to let me get it out before you have it.
No, councillor Johnson, just move your resolution, please.
Thank you, I would like to do so.
Please go ahead.
I seek leave to suspend so much of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion. I move that Brisbane City Council provides a list by street and suburb name of the wombat crossings constructed in Brisbane over the past three years, fully discloses all requests for wombat crossings in Brisbane over the past three years, investigates and approves a wombat crossing on Will Powell Street and Cook Street, Oxley, and works with local councillors to determine the suitability of wombat crossings when requested. And that now has been emailed through.
Seconded. Thank you. All right, I have a procedural motion for an urgency motion. Three minutes now councillor Johnson has distributed that. She assures me through the email system, it will be presented to all councillors electronically momentarily. Councillor Johnson, please continue.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. This is an urgent motion today because unfortunately, the L N P administration and presumably in this case, the Infrastructure Chairman, councillor McLaughlin, could not be bothered to answer questions asked about wombat crossings in good faith, which are reported on the council agenda today. I asked a very simple question, which was, how many wombat crossings are there in Brisbane? Could you please provide a list of wombat crossings? Could you please provide a list of wombat crossings by street and suburb name and year of installation? And, uh, the answer provided by councillor McLaughlin, uh, to this, uh, which is on page three of today's agenda, if anybody, uh, would like to see, is that council does not retain records of a complete list of wombat crossings. Now, this matter is quite urgent because I'm pretty sure that council knows where zebra crossings are in Brisbane. I'm pretty sure council knows where wombat crossings are in Brisbane. Um, but this council has decided to play stupid political games and councillor McLaughlin is responsible for answering these questions and has simply failed to provide some basic information to me as a local councillor about wombat crossings. Now, I know that they are well supported by residents in our community. I don't know where they are in Brisbane. I know there are some in Cook Street and I know I have requested an additional one in Cook Street in the, um, Oxley Shopping Precinct. And I'd also like to see one in Will Powell Street to help, uh, with traffic management, uh, around Corinda State School. Um, it's really interesting, um, that the other question on notice today, this is why the urgency motion's been moved, asks for a list of all the wombat crossings by street and suburb, um, and the year of request. Now, the one I requested doesn't even make the list and that's in February twenty twenty, reference number one, 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 nine, zero, four, five, one. So it is not acceptable.
I just need to ask you to come back to the, the matter of urgency rather than the substance of your concern, please.
And it is not acceptable that this council fails to answer questions on notice that are asked in good faith that ask for simple factual information about where council pedestrian assets are located. That information needs to be made public to councillors. Um, we should be having a discussion about how to make it safer for pedestrians to move around our city. And I think that, uh, this council should make an effort to answer the, uh, questions of councillors to provide the information that they have requested and also, um, to provide accurate information about which requests have been made. Um, I know at least one that I've made is not on this list and I have zero confidence that others have not been missed as well. Um, wombat crossings can be very useful, uh, traffic calming and pedestrian safety devices.
Councillor Johnson's time has expired.
But should be discussed.
If you support, uh, urgency on this matter, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
And those who, uh, vote no, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
No.
Thank you, the matter is lost, the resolution is lost.
Division.
Five of a second for that division. Councillor Griffiths?
Sorry, I'm muting, yes.
Right, yeah. All right, I will call a division, please ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. All right, all those in favour of the urgency, uh, resolution, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, please lower your hands and all those voting no, please, uh, raise your hand, say no and hold your hand uh, in the camera so that we can, uh, count it.
No.
No.
Thank you, councillors, please lower your hands. Uh, Clarks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mister Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and twenty against.
The noes have it. Uh, councillors, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report to Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, eleventh of May, twenty twenty, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the eleventh of May, twenty twenty, be adopted, is in debate, the Lord Mayor.
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Chair, uh, thank you. And, um, before I move on to other matters, I just wanted to, uh, point out the massive own goal scored by, uh, the Labour opposition in question time. Uh, and this was something that I remember they pushed really hard during the council election to suggest that somehow, um, there was an unusual amount of footpaths waiting to be repaired. Um, they quoted the seven hundred footpaths and they said Labour's going to fix these seven hundred footpaths. Lo and behold, as councillor Marks confirmed today, uh, we have already in the last twelve months fixed over fourteen hundred footpaths, double the number.
Apple and oranges, maintenance.
No, 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 no objections, please.
To fix in the election. So Labour's election promises.
No objections, please.
Fixing seven hundred footpaths, yet we find out today, thanks to Labour's own goal, that we have already fixed double the number of that, of those footpaths that need to be fixed. Uh, and this just goes to show that Labour.
No, no, councillor Johnston, please cease interjecting. Lord Mayor.
Uh, we'll say and do anything to try and score a political point. Uh, and let's forget about the facts when it comes to Labour. They don't like talking about the facts, they just like, uh, trying to score political points. Uh, but I can tell you, at any one time, at any one time across the history of Brisbane City Council, there will always be hundreds of footpaths that need to be fixed, but it is an ongoing rolling programme. And so as footpaths are fixed, uh, more come to our attention that need to be fixed or are reported or more are damaged, uh, and they join the list. So there will be a number of footpaths at any one time that need to be fixed. I'm not aware of any time in the city's history ever when there have been zero footpaths waiting to be fixed. There is always, uh, a number that are needed to be fixed. It's like saying that there are zero potholes to be fixed at any one time. We know that that's not the way things work in reality. There will always be repairs to be done. Uh, and so councillor Marks has pointed out that, uh, we have doubled Labour's commitment. Uh, they said they would, they promised to fix seven hundred footpaths if elected. Uh, we've already fixed fourteen hundred in the last twelve months. So, uh, well done councillor Marks. I know you are continuing the good work that councillor Howard did in that portfolio and getting on to these jobs. And, and I, I commend you as well on going out to talk to local councillors across, uh, the city, to talk to them about their priorities when it comes to local issues, uh, taking that hands-on approach. Uh, it is why that I created the city standards portfolio, because it is all about making sure that our city is well-run, well-maintained and those, those local maintenance issues are being dealt with as they should be. Uh, and I know, as I said, councillor Marks, you will continue on the great work that, uh, councillor Howard did in that role, uh, and a, and a slightly changed and, and amended role, but one that, uh, you are both passionate about. Uh, so thank you for your work, councillor Marks, in fixing footpaths and I know that will continue. Uh, today, uh, I just wanted to go through, as I normally do, um, uh, some of the important community uh, causes that we're acknowledging, uh, by lighting up council assets. Uh, this week is National Volunteer Week and I know all of us are very grateful for the work that volunteers do in our community. Uh, and, uh, it is an opportunity to acknowledge and recognise that work and to, uh, do what we can as a community uh, and as an organisation to support our volunteers and thank our volunteers. If we didn't have volunteers contributing, uh, in the way that they do, uh, the community would be poorer for it. Uh, and if we actually, uh, had to calculate the dollars, uh, that it would cost to replace those volunteer hours, it would be billions of dollars per year, uh, in volunteer effort to support our community. And so today, uh, and this week, we continue to, uh, thank and acknowledge our volunteers across the community that do so much to make our city a better place and our community a better place. Uh, so for today, Wednesday and Thursday, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridges, the Brisbane City Hall, the Tropical Dome at the Botanic Gardens and the Sandgate Town Hall, uh, will all be lit up in red, uh, to acknowledge National Volunteer Week. Uh, on Friday, uh, we will see the Sandgate Town Hall lit up in red for a different reason. Uh, not because it's National Volunteer Week, but because, uh, we are lighting it up for Cystic Fibrosis Awareness Month. Uh, the sixty-five roses campaign, many councillors will be aware of, uh, and sixty-five roses, uh, dates back a long way. Uh, when a child hearing the name of his disease for the very first time, uh, cystic fibrosis, pronounced, uh, the disease as sixty-five roses. And so that stuck. Um, and it's a way of bringing people together and raising awareness around the condition. Um, and so the Sandgate Town Hall will be lit up in red on Friday in acknowledgement of cystic fibrosis awareness ro- uh, month, uh, for the sixty-five roses campaign. Over the weekend, uh, on Saturday and Sunday, the Victoria Bridge, Reddick Place and Story Bridge, and also the Tropical Dome will be lit up in red once again. So it's a very red week this week. Um, and this time, uh, it is for the Red Shield Appeal, uh, which the Salvation Army does every year. And so, uh, this year, obviously, like many different charity organisations, uh, the Red Shield Appeal will not be the same. Uh, many councillors, uh, have joined me, um, over many years in their involvement with, uh, the Red Shield Appeal, whether it's attending the, uh, the launch breakfast, which happens in all the major capitals, including here in Brisbane, uh, or whether it's donating personally, uh, or assisting with the Red Shield Appeal. I know that, uh, we are all very supportive of the work that Salvos do. And this weekend, we're, uh, lighting up those assets in acknowledgement of Red Shield Appeal. Uh, this year, it'll be a virtual, uh, collection for the Red Shield Appeal. Obviously, um, due to COVID, uh, it won't be able to occur in the same way that it normally does, but the need out there in the community is just as great and in fact greater this year. And that means that organisations like, uh, the Salvos uh, need your support, need community support to continue meeting that need. Uh, so please, uh, continue to get behind, uh, the Salvos Red Shield Appeal in the way that you have done, uh, to date. Item A on the agenda is the contracts and tendering report for March twenty twenty. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, work of contin- uh, of council continues with a lot of important projects. Uh, and we continue to, uh, do our best to make sure that we are supporting local business with these contracts, uh, continuing to strive towards our target of, uh, eighty percent of local contracts, of contracts going to local business uh, and, uh, in turn, supporting, uh, local jobs in our community. Uh, and so, uh, that has been brought forward. Also, item B, uh, is something that I announced, uh, some weeks ago with the support for, uh, our community, uh, as a result of the COVID pandemic and the financial impact that that has generated. And so we know all too well that, um, uh, COVID has caused impacts across business, uh, residential and also community groups. Uh, and these changes will help us provide, uh, support where it is needed. Uh, we know that there's been, uh, seven point nine million dollars worth of support provided through the waiver of fees and charges for local business uh, and also for sporting and community organisations. Uh, this particular change, um, allows us to provide a full remission of rates for not-for-profit community organisations. Now, not-for-profit community organisations that are based on council land have already had their fees waived or their lease fees waived. Uh, that has already occurred. This is for those organisations that are based on private land. And so, um, they might be on a private site owned by the organisation um, and we're providing a, a quarter of, uh, full rates waiver for those organisations to help them get through this challenging time. Uh, so this, uh, submission today allows that to happen so that we can provide support where it is needed the most to those community organisations. As I referred to before with sporting clubs, um, there are many community clubs and sporting organisations who have lost significant amounts of their normal income, uh, some that have lost all of their normal income, yet they still have ongoing bills. And so this is a way of, uh, where council has control of the levers, um, pulling those levers to support the organisations. Now, uh, we want it to be, uh, the case that if a community organisation is based on council land and we waive the charges, that community organisations on private land also have an opportunity to benefit, uh, so that.
Your time has expired.
Adding to their burden.
Did you want an extension of time?
No.
I'm if an extension of time, Mister Chair. Lord Mayor's advised.
Guys are on it. I have my hand up, Mister Chair, I don't think he's.
No, 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 thank you, everyone.
Not necessary, not necessary.
The mayor has declined it, thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, just on E and C, these two items here, um, before I started, just ask that they be taken seriatum for voting purposes, please.
Uh, seriatum for voting.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. Um, uh, item A is the, um, another round of contracts, uh, and tendering coming to council, uh, where councillors here, uh, on Zoom, uh, are being asked to rubber stamp, um, these contracts that have been entered into by councils delegates, um, without any re- real detail. When you, when you flick through, uh, the papers that have been provided to councillors, again, there are, uh, simply titles of projects and dollar figures without any explanation. Um, I again, uh, went up to level twenty-three at Brisbane Square to seek information on these contracts. Um, uh, and again, there is no information available to councillors even behind closed doors uh, on, uh, what this money is being spent on, close to four million dollars of rate payers' money. So as long as, uh, the LNP refuse to give meaningful details about how this money is being spent, uh, we will not be supporting, uh, these reports coming to council. Uh, item B is the rates concessions and I found it very interesting that Lord Mayor didn't, um, spend all that long talking about this and I suspect why is when you go and delve into the details of what is actually, uh, contained within this so-called rates concession um, package. Now, while we'll be voting in support of this package, Chair, we don't believe this goes far enough, uh, by any stretch. Um, council needs to provide genuine rates relief, um, and certainty to ease, uh, the financial crisis that Brisbane residents are facing as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. So the measures before us today only apply to the rates bill for the current March to June quarter uh, and nothing beyond June twenty twenty. Uh, you know, of course, when the budget comes down, we'd imagine something else will be in there, but, um, councillor Allen earlier uh, would not commit that there wouldn't be rates increases adding to the pressure of, uh, Brisbane residents in that budget. So we have a council that has a, a three point one billion dollar annual budget and we can certainly do better than what is proposed before us today. Regional councils that are much smaller, uh, than Brisbane are stepping up and going above and beyond for their residents at the moment. Uh, one very close by, Moreton Bay Regional Council is giving two hundred dollars in rebates over two quarters to owner occupiers in financial difficulty. Uh, the Toowoomba Regional Council, a much smaller council, uh, is investing, uh, ten point five million dollars in a recovery package. It includes a hundred and twenty-five dollar concession uh, for a majority of the ratable properties within their regional council area. Now, while this Lord Mayor, uh, is happy to spend four million dollars on self-promotion glossy brochures, uh, we believe the priority should be on supporting residents, supporting bris- businesses and organisations at this difficult time. Uh, Labour believes that Brisbane can do much better than a one-off, one point six million dollar package on offer today. And that's the figure that the Lord Mayor, uh, refused to give earlier. Uh, he talked about the twenty-nine million dollar rates deferral, uh, but that's not a discount, that's not financial assistance for people doing it tough. That's kicking the can down the road. Uh, that's twenty-nine million dollars worth of rates that people will have to pay at some point with no financial assistance. So the only financial assistance that the largest council in Australia is giving to Brisbane residents, a budget of three point one billion dollars, is one point six million dollars. So there's, there is no doubt that COVID nineteen has hit our community hard here in Brisbane, uh, Chair, and as is often said, uh, this situation is unprecedented. Uh, so what is required is unprecedented leadership, which we don't see from this Lord Mayor. Thousands of people have already lost their jobs or been stood down as workplaces have had to close shop um, as the spread of COVID nineteen has occurred. There is much uncertainty about what the future will hold for these people and some of these people will never, ever find. And some of these people will never, ever find secure permanent jobs again. There will be a generation of people unemployed as a result of the recession that we will have after this health crisis. So people don't need extra uncertainty at this time. Brisbane rate payers that are being financially impacted on as a result of the shutdown deserve more than a promise that they won't be hit with an interest charge if they have a delayed payment. When you look at the detail of this package, that is about the only financial assistance that most rate payers will get, is this Lord Mayor saying, if you pay late and we expect you to pay, we won't hit you with an exorbitant interest charge and that's about it. So that's why we are calling for much more and immediate financial support for those doing it tough. We should be seeing rates rebates for people who fit this criteria, who are doing it tough, who are without work or have been reduced hours at work. And there should be a rates freeze. We have called for that in the past and we continue to call for a rates freeze for the 2020-2021 financial year. This is an organisation that has an enormous budget. We see this Lord Mayor doesn't mind going over budget by two hundred million dollars on his Metro. He doesn't mind blowing one hundred percent of the contingency budget on the Kestis and the Tribe project. He doesn't seem to care about wasting twenty seven million dollars on the failed IT contract. And he doesn't mind telling the eight thousand plus employees at the Brisbane City Council that you will get no pay increase on his watch. And yet he can't offer any financial assistance to those doing it tough, Chair. So while we will support this item going forward, it is a drop in the ocean of what is required. And it is really, really very disappointing to see that even a council like the Toowoomba Regional Council, that is very small, can manage their budget and a better way to offer real rates relief to people doing it tough at the moment.
Further speakers? councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item A. But I would like to say, I am so happy I'm part of Team Shrinna because we are positive and looking forward and trying to make a difference in our city. Unlike Team Cassidy, who is all doom and gloom and negative and has no positive, nothing positive to say about our city moving forward.
Underjections.
I'd like to particularly point on item A, Bradbury Park. Now, for those of you who don't have the good luck and good fortune to live on the north side of Brisbane, Bradbury Park is in between Rhodey Road and Kitchener Road. It's a massive park, which is home to, sorry, my dog's barking in the background, home to Nipoll and also the Churnside Bowls Club. This contract enables, after a lot of public consultation, community fun fair events to get to see what the residents wanted, we're bringing a nature play to Bradbury Park. And this was in direct consultation with Kidron Heights Kindies, who named it their Magic Forest. So I'm delighted that this Magic Forest is going to come to light and also the scooter experience because we know that we want to get that more, the older age group, that more difficult age group to get out, that eight-plus age group to enjoy our beautiful open spaces. So I'm delighted to see that this contract has been awarded and we can get on and deliver the job. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on item A and item B. Firstly, with respect to item B and the rates concession. I mean, weeks ago, I publicly spoke out about the situation, you know, with people who are in financial distress in our community. Unfortunately, the LNP has a very strong track record of failing to assist residents when it comes to rates relief in times of crisis. Back in 2011, after the floods, when, you know, so many suburbs around Brisbane were completely devastated. This LNP administration, including councillor Shrinna, put forward a one point eight percent on average rates increase. So some people were even higher than that again. So in every single year of the twelve years I've been a councillor, that the LNP have been in charge of the finances of this city, rates have increased. One point eight percent, from memory, is the lowest rates increase under the LNP in the past twelve years. Whilst rates increases might have been capped at six or seven percent in some years, that's huge. And I would think that probably around four or five percent is pretty much the average each year, every year by the LNP. Here we are again, in a time of crisis, when our city and our residents are doing it tough and our business owners are doing it tough. And I've been asking for my businesses and residents and there's just flat-out no's coming back from Brisbane City Council. It is outrageous that some businesses are being charged without any relief being considered for additional charges which sit with respect to some of the skip payments that are ongoing. But the bigger problem here is there's no real rates relief. Now, let's be clear, the Lord Mayor has a little bit of hocus pocus going on here. He wants residents to believe he's being all philanthropic and empathetic and that he's doing something to help people in Brisbane doing it tough. No, he's not. He's giving people a rates deferral, which means that that bill will become payable in a few months' time, still in the current financial year. So you watch the Lord Mayor in a month's time stand up and say, why we can't do all these things in Brisbane? Because there's no revenue coming. And then in a few months' time, when all the rates become due, he'll rake that money in. Now, what the Lord Mayor is proposing to do here is completely inadequate. He's trying to have his cake and eat it too. And Brisbane residents are missing out. In times of crisis, we need to step up and we need to look at how we can help families and businesses that are doing it tough. And thirty million dollars in a rates deferral is not good enough. This administration needs to do more. We're supposed to be having, what was it during the election campaign? I keep seeing it now, that we've got an experienced team in leadership. Yes, they are experienced. They are experienced in raising rates. And councillor Allen wasn't here after the 2011 floods. And the impact of rates rises on residents out in my area was horrific, horrific. They weren't in their homes and yet their rates were increased. And I don't see why the Lord Mayor can't be upfront with the residents of Brisbane now about what his intentions are. This experienced LNP administration won't even have a public discussion with its own councillors and with the citizens of Brisbane to discuss one of the most severe economic and health crises ever faced in Australia. And, you know, the impact of this on our economy and on our community has been huge, huge. Meanwhile, the Lord Mayor, for sure, is going to whack rates up and will not look at proper relief for residents. Meanwhile, his major projects are blowing out. The level of experience that these people are offering the city of Brisbane is not the right experience. We want to see a compassionate response that recognises the hardship that Brisbane residents are facing. We want to see priorities that reflect the current crisis and the need to change the way we do business in this council. We need to look at ways that we can assist residents so they get practical financial relief now, not just deferral. Because, you know, in a few months' time, if they're still doing it tough, these bills are going to come payable again. What's the Lord Mayor going to do? Say, no, you've got to pay. Then what happens? Are we going to spend the next decade chasing these poor people for rates repayments? I mean, this is just not the way that we should be going about assisting the residents of Brisbane at a time of crisis. It is a absolutely poor effort by this Lord Mayor, who in every single year he has been in administration and in civic cabinet, has presided over massive rates increases. Every single year, including 2011, twelve, after the floods. One point eight percent, that is the lowest amount of the twelve years I've been here of any rates increase under this administration. That is a shocking, shocking record. Not even a zero increase, not even a rates freeze in the year after the floods. So, you know, this Lord Mayor absolutely is experienced. He's experienced at ripping money out of Brisbane residents' pockets, failing to recognise the financial hardship they're experiencing and failing to change the way this council operates to make sure that we're addressing the significant financial and health crisis that our city, our country and the globe finds itself in. So this is just, I mean, this is just doing something to say you're doing something. Residents are going to find you out pretty quick, pretty damn quick, that's for sure. Now, with respect to item A, I'm really interested in what the almost five hundred thousand dollars is for access and inclusion at the Sunnybank Theatre. I presume the Sunnybank Theatre that is referred to is the Performing Arts Centre at Sunnybank, the multicultural performing arts centre, which I can't, well, I'd be very happy to know what the Sunnybank. I can see councillor Wong shaking his head. So perhaps the Lord Mayor can update us in his closing. What is the Sunnybank Theatre? Is it a council leased facility? And what are we spending four hundred and seventy six thousand dollars on at the Sunnybank Theatre? That's a phenomenal amount of money. Is it a ramp? Is it toilets? I'd certainly like to know what the expenditure of half a million dollars of council money is going towards. It's very unclear in the council papers we have before us today.
Further speakers, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I enter the debate on item A and particularly to speak about Contracts Four and Six. So Contract Four is the Brisbane Metropolitan Touch Association Maintenance Shed and Associated Works. Now, Mr Chair, through you, this contract was awarded to deliver council's project to upgrade the facilities at the Brisbane Metropolitan Touch Association based at Whites Hill Reserve. The BMTA have been a strong part of the local community for almost thirty years. And under normal circumstances, the BMTA's fields are busy seven days a week with up to nine thousand people using the fields on a weekly basis. So this is an exciting project for the BMTA and the local community, which I know that councillor Adams has worked very hard to secure funding for. And I know she shares the club's excitement to see this work get underway this month. This contract allows council to deliver this important work that will see the club benefit from all new, larger and upgraded maintenance shed, which will include a shower, toilet, washdown bay and connections for events. It will also see the upgrading of the onsite electrical sub-meters and install in-ground services from the existing clubhouse to this new facility. Even more exciting is that these works are in addition to the one hundred thousand dollar funding that council has provided to BMTA to upgrade their irrigation systems to make it easier, more efficient and cheaper for them to work and maintain their fields. All of this work, including the irrigation upgrades, are now underway and will be completed in time for the World All Schools Touch Football Carnival, which the BMTA is set to host in October this year, which will attract up to four hundred and fifty teams and approximately four thousand five hundred participants in Brisbane. So we hope that that will be able to proceed. I hope that Queensland will be in a position to be able to allow that, as I said, to go ahead. Now, I know the club and its members have been looking forward to this for a very long time and it will be a great support for the many local small businesses in Brisbane to benefit from a boost of the local community that events bring such as this one. I certainly join councillor Adams in her excitement seeing this project delivered. It's a great outcome for the local community that will continue to benefit from using these upgraded facilities for decades to come. Moving to Contract Six, which is the Sunnybank Theatre. And part of what makes Brisbane such a livable city, of course, is its accessibility inclusivity, to make sure that everyone feels they belong regardless of age, ability or background. And so since 2012, we've invested more than two hundred and thirty million dollars to make Brisbane more accessible, connected and inclusive. And it is this commitment that has seen our city transform into a place where more local residents can participate than ever before. We have achieved so much together already and I'm proud to be able to stand here today and say that every single one of our buses and our city cats and now wheelchair and pram accessible. And we have more recreation opportunities than ever before with seven accessible aquaplay facilities and forty all-ability playgrounds. But we know there's more work to be done and that's why we are building on these achievements. So this contract is just one of the ways that we are continuing with this important work to make Sunnybank Theatre more accessible than ever before and to ensure that more residents are able to enjoy this much-loved facility. I'm pleased to advise that the work has already begun on this project with construction kicking off in April and it's set to deliver two designated accessible parking bays and a new path from the accessible parking base to the main pedestrian entrance. It'll improve the main pedestrian entrance to make it more accessible. It'll install a new passenger lift to allow lift access to all levels, including the stage. And it will upgrade accessibility of the toilets, including the installation of two new unisex accessible toilets. So I know that councillor Wong is certainly looking forward to seeing these exciting works be completed later this year. And I want to thank all our dedicated officers who work so hard every day to help make Brisbane even better. Through you, Mr Chair, it's a great shame that councillor Cassidy is not supportive of these important projects for the community, especially seeing as the councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook have been grandstanding about how they supposedly are fighting for supporting our community clubs. And let me be clear, that councillor Cassidy has said that he refuses to support both a nine hundred thousand dollar project for one of the largest sporting community organisations in our city. Not only that, but he is also saying that he does not support a five hundred thousand dollar project to make one of our much-loved community theatres even more accessible. So through you, councillor.
Point of order.
Claim to misrepresented.
Councillor Howard, defend please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So I just can't understand why they're not supporting these projects. Team Shrinna is the only team that's committed to supporting our community organisations and our clubs and I commend the items to the chamber. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor Cassidy, the misrepresentation.
Thanks very much, Chair. Councillor Howard's got a pretty vivid imagination there and
Please outline what the misrepresentation.
More than happy to mislead the chamber there. But I said, we won't be supporting these Contracts and Tendering documents being brought to council without meaningful information being provided to councillors.
Okay, thank you. Further speakers? councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on item A and item B. And I thank councillor Howard and the Connected Communities team for the support of the Brisbane Metropolitan Touch Association. It is a sporting club that has just come into specifically my area in the new Holland Park boundaries, but has been on the boundaries for the last four years and has also been a very important part of my family and their touch playing and refereeing over the last ten years. So I know the fields very, very well. It is a very high-quality community facility. It's well-managed between touch and cricket and soccer, very diverse and a whole range of other things in between from recreation, social and cultural opportunities as well. And as you mentioned, this is a maintenance programme to upgrade some of the facilities that the Touch Association has for their maintenance shed. In particular, the shed at the moment is located underneath the existing clubhouse and it is on an old landfill site, as so many of our large recreational areas are. Therefore, there has been a lot of work on the remediation and repurposing of this facility to make sure it is right for multi-sporting facilities, park and play areas. We have had a lot of differential settlement, obviously, being on a landfill for the clubhouse. And this has actually meant they've had to temporarily relocate all of their gear they've had in this area to container sheds. So bringing it back underneath their clubhouse is going to make it fantastic for them. It'll give them a whole new life cycle of facilities for their growing needs. It also will help being closer to their playing fields rather than the two hundred metres down the road where it is at the moment. So this contract is welcomed, as you said, with the extension of the hundred thousand dollars in grants towards the water that the group is working on. And I look forward to, as you said, when restrictions ease, getting back out into some of the formal competition, we'll see. when restrictions ease getting back out into some of the formal competition we'll see on this site as well. I also, uh, would like to speak on item B that is before us today, which is around the, um, the, uh, rates concession to our non-for-profit groups. And I sit here listening to questions that we hear in question times and the debate we've just heard from councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnson. And all I can say is to the people of Brisbane, thank you very, very much for having the foresight and the intelligence to make sure you're elected an administration who has fiscal responsibility and knows how to run a city the size of Brisbane.
Point of order.
Overrun!
Councillor Strunk, you have a point of order?
Yes, uh, Mr Chair, I don't believe, um, the or-oration by the deputy mayor is anything to do with these contracts, uh, or about the concessions, um, in regards to.
It's a pretty broad interpretation. You could be asked as part of, thank you, I understand the point of order you're making and I'm going to, um, provide a response. There was a very broad interpretation of what was permitted when discussing item B. And now councillor Adams is using that same, a generous interpretation of what can be discussed in item B to make these points. Councillor Adams.
Thank you councillor Wong, and through you, Mr Chair, I'm sure councillor Strunk doesn't want to hear this, but we heard very clearly from the leader of the opposition and the actual leader of the opposition councillor Johnson about what this fiscal responsibility meant to the people of Brisbane. Uh, what I don't understand is how they don't understand.
Point of order councillor Strunk.
I be- I believe, uh, the deputy mayor's missing, she, she actually said that, uh, councillor Johnson is the opposition leader and I don't believe that is appropriate.
Uh, well, I think it was, I think it was a, um.
They're just being childish, that's all.
No, 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 please don't.
Inappropriate and childish, it's a rule.
Stop with the name-calling.
Hey, well, I'm just being called names, make a ruling.
Don't, don't, don't speak to me like that councillor Johnston, it's not acceptable.
Don't you speak to me like that. You've told everybody that they've got to use appropriate titles and I would say she needs to use mine.
Please, um, address me with courtesy. It's something that I've always.
The rules.
Once again, you're not doing it. I, I ask.
Even you call me the leader of the opposition and call me a member of the Labour Party, it's not on. You've got rules to uphold, do it.
Please stop yelling at me.
Administer the rules then.
Please stop yelling at me, okay? I, I request, uh, I know that you request courtesy to be extended to you. I ask you extend courtesy to me, please.
When you administer the rules.
It is not optional.
No, it's not optional. So administer the rules and pull the deputy mayor.
I'm asking you to extend me the courtesy you respect, you expect to be shown to you.
You don't show any to me personally yourself. I'm not the leader of the opposition. Please make sure that the deputy mayor follows the rules that you are supposed to enforce.
Please stop hectoring me councillor Johnston, there is no need for it.
Follow the rules.
No, it's, see, all right. I will follow the rules. Councillor Johnston, I consider that uh, you're displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section twenty-one five of the Meetings Local Law two thousand and one, I hereby request that you cease interjecting and refrain from.
Oops, I did it again.
Please. Councillor, uh, the deputy mayor, uh, please use people's proper titles in future. Deputy mayor.
Up through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnson, as I said, have debated in this place through question time and through the E and C committee this afternoon about how we're not doing enough. We're not doing enough in footpaths, we're not doing enough in, in mosquito, um, what we heard last week. We're not doing enough on the missing links, we're not doing enough for our community groups. But we're not allowed to do anything to do with rates, we have to do more with less. What we have seen from this administration is absolutely a responsible fiscal response to supporting businesses and community groups across the city. We have seen seven point nine million dollars in business fees and charges waived and or relaxed over the next three months. This is another addition to that package of works that we have been talking about since we've been back in council to support non-for-profit groups. As the Lord Mayor said, groups that are already on Brisbane City Council land have had their fees, whether they licensing or leasing fees waived already. This is about making sure councillor Cook, through you, Mr Chair, that we do get those community groups that you were talking about in question one today to the Lord Mayor. Councillor Cook also mentioned about a rehash of the waters. This is not a rehash, it's another grant of water rebates to our sporting clubs. Not a rehash, the second one, where we now have sporting clubs up to ten thousand dollars off their water for this year. And I can assure you councillor Cook, they are very, very happy with that. And no, I agree, it will not go towards paying for their electricity bills, but that is not our responsibility, that is the state government's responsibility. And when they start decreasing the bulk state water bill, then we will see the relief to our sporting communities. We have suspended business and recycling fees. We have refunded bookings in our council venues. We have relaxed the compliance programmes for essential services to operate out of homes. We have done an amazing amount of work to make sure we are supporting community groups and businesses right across the city. And councillor Allen and the team are working hard on the Recovery Task Force and the budget does come down in one month where we will see more. This item before us today is making sure nobody misses out on the support that we're offering across the board to businesses and sporting, sporting communities or people that are on our lease sites across the city. I have to disagree again with councillor Johnson when she said every single year we see massive rate rises. We do not see massive rate rises. We see responsible rate rises in relation to the CPI increases from the same councillor who every year complains she doesn't get enough on footpaths, she doesn't get enough on parks, but she wants less money to come in and more stuff to go into Tennyson. That is not fiscal responsibility. If she wanted to see large rate rises, she should have been here in the nineties when we saw six years of more than six percent rate increases under Jim Sawley and the ALP team. As I reiterated at the start of this speech, Mr Chair, I am so glad that the people of Brisbane realise that they wanted to be supported in business, in community groups, even before the COVID pandemic had hit to this level, that they chose the right team to support them and we will continue to support them through our packages of offerings over the coming months. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? I see no further speakers. Oh, excuse me, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, please turn on your microphone.
Got it. Um, Mr Chair, I just want to enter the debate briefly on, um, item B, the COVID nineteen pandemic rates concession. Now, you know, clearly we've responded to the hardship that's being felt by residents, uh, not-for-profits and businesses with a, a range of initiatives and concessions. And these are ongoing, we're constantly looking at how we can assist the cross-section of the, uh, the Brisbane community. So to date, we've obviously made major, um, cost savings for, for business, we're looking at obviously deferrals for, um, rate payers. We're looking at concessions for, um, not-for-profits. That's an ongoing exercise and, uh, to the points that councillor Adams made, um, it, it's just quite astounding to listen to the, uh, comments that have been made today in the, the debate. Um, we've got councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook calling on additional expenditure, but on one hand, and then on the other hand, looking for, uh, you know, revenue, revenue reduction ideas. And, uh, you know, I'm just sensing that they've, um, both graduates of the George Street School of Economics. And, uh, you know, it's basically you, uh, reduce your revenue, increase your costs, increase your debt and everything's going to be sweet. Now, we're acutely aware of the challenges that the business community and residents.
Is, I think I have a point of order, is that correct councillor Cook?
Yes, I was just saying that councillor Allen is misleading the chamber.
Well, um, I will direct councillor Allen to limit his comments to things that are factually correct. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So, look, you know, the, the reality around the numbers are that when i- in this administration, we've had approximately average rate increases of just over three percent in the period that the LNP's been in administration. When the ALP was in administration, rate increases on average were closer to four and a half percent. Um, a one point eight percent rate increase, which councillor Johnston referred to, is not an unreasonable rate increase when you have a look at the context of what has to be delivered in this city. Now, we have a very significant demand on, um, services and infrastructure via this city and it's an expectation of our residents. And so to increase rates in the vicinity of two, two and a half percent is totally reasonable. We are not looking to, um, make exorbitant, uh, rate increases as the previous ALP administration did do. I also think that councillor Johnston and councillor Cassidy are getting way ahead of the game here in terms of, um, speculating on what this administration may or may not do. And once again, as I suggested in question time, I think everybody should just wait until the budget's handed down on the seventeenth of June. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise, well, I'm not rising, I'm sitting down, but I'm, uh, going to speak briefly to item A, um, on the contracts and tendering and make the point that when the council for Deegan Ward votes against, uh, item A, the contracts and tendering report, we're voting against a substantial product in the ward of Deegan. Um, that is, uh, mortar repair, mortar pad repairs on the cabbage tree creek bikeway. Now councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy, um, sometimes what you see is what you get. Um, in the contracts and tendering report, as we've said before, these are the contracts that relate to council undertaking its ordinary course of business. Uh, ordinary course of business is repairing our assets. That includes our bikeways and the bridges that go over our waterways. And that's what's, um, being done here. I know through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Cassidy that, um, and thankfully you'll never get the chance, I hope to get involved in contract administration in the city while you continue just to play politics. But, uh, what you see in this report, uh, is what you get. It, the outline is for contract two, mortar pad repairs at cabbage tree creek bikeway bridge. And guess what? Uh, what's being delivered are mortar pad repairs at the cabbage tree creek bikeway bridge. That's it. There's no secrecy to this. Uh, if you want some more information, uh, uh, and this may come as a surprise to you, but these works are undertaken to extend the life of these assets. And that's what is involved in the contracts and tendering report, uh, week in, week out, is the repair and maintenance of assets so that we can extend their useful life. That's it. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Look, I also, um, am speaking on item A, which is contracts and tendering. Um, there's been a little bit of confusion through the chamber today around the, um, Sunnybank Theatre. So I just want to clarify that for everybody. Um, I know one of the councillors mentioned previously that she thought potentially it was Sunpac. It's not Sunpac, which is a Sunnybank Performing Arts Centre, which is a brand-new fifteen-million-dollar building that council built in conjunction with the Sunnybank Community Centre some time ago. That's in councillor Wong's ward. Um, the Sunnybank Theatre is actually a theatre group that has been going for some fifty years. It's a heritage-listed building, hence the reason that the cost is so extraordinarily high because of how much work we have to do. So yes, it's disappointing that the la- all the Labour councillors will be voting against residents of all over Brisbane having access to what is a fifty-year-old Sunnybank Theatre Group. Um, at the moment, the, the only way patrons can actually get into the theatre is they have to sit on one of those little chairs that is like on a rail on the side of a stairwell, which, you know, if you're, you know, quite agile, is not terribly, um, um, helpful. But when you're, you know, aged and infirm and, and in a wheelchair, there's no way on earth that you can sit on one of those little seats and kind of be round, wound up the stairs. So it's definitely been a long time in coming and I'm delighted and the Sunnybank Theatre Group and all the patrons are absolutely delighted too, that this, um, work is finally happening. Um, councillor Howard listed again, what was the, um, involved, was it? You know, scope of works was installed two designated accessible parking bays, a continuous access path from the parking base through to the pedestrian entrance, um, improved the principal pedestrian entrance to make it functional and accessible. Um, the passenger lift, which, as we've said, will go to all levels, is actually three levels of the theatre. Um, they have to reconfigure some of the internal space to allow equitable all-weather access to the lifts and toilets. Because at the moment, the only way you can get into the theatre is you actually have to walk outside and walk up some stairs and then go back into the theatre that way. As I said, this building is heritage listed. Um, we also two unisex accessible toilets, as well as other facilities, talking about the green room and all this sort of stuff. So it's a huge, huge project and in fact I had one of the, um, the members of the theatre group just ring me today, is just super excited that the, um, the big crane's coming in tomorrow, which will be lifting the lift that has got to be installed. And this whole thing, um, is, is lifted over the building and put into place on the other side of the building. So this is happening tomorrow, so they're super excited about that and they want me to go out there and have a look and see what's going on. So the theatre group are enormously grateful to the Lord Mayor for not only this funding, but the actual access and inclusion plan that allows for things like this to happen, where residents who would normally, no way would be able to access anything of this work that the theatre group does, now will be able to have access to a fabulous facility. Obviously, at the moment, they're under, um, COVID planning, so there, there's no theatre group, um, plays happening at the moment, which is a shame. But on the other hand, it's meaning that this work is getting underway a lot quicker than would normally be without any disruption to any theatre group, um, plays. So, um, I'm looking forward to having the Lord Mayor out there and, um, open it up when it's all ready to go again. And I know the theatre patrons will be too. So I thank you, Lord Mayor, for this, um, huge boost to the Sunnybank Theatre. I know all the residents are very grateful too. Thank you.
Further speakers? I see no further speakers. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, where do I start? Uh, let me start with, um, the suggestions that somehow, uh, council is not doing enough when it comes to supporting the community. It's very easy and, and this opposition quite easily falls into the trap of being a lazy opposition, which is, uh, just call for anyone in office to do more. They're never doing enough, they must do more. Um, and just opposition for opposition's sake, which is what we're seeing today. Uh, but when it comes to the support that council has provided, I am very proud that Brisbane City Council led Australia and continues to lead Australia when it comes to the support provided for the community. Uh, not only are we providing support, uh, for businesses, and that's been covered many times in terms of the waiver of fees and, and charges on businesses, but also providing support for community organisations, sporting organisations and providing support for residents as well. Uh, now councillor Cassidy, uh, listed, um, that, uh, you know, apparently some other councils are providing, uh, just widespread discounts on rates or, uh, one-off rebates on rates. I have a very clear view that we can achieve more and the impact of what we do can be more effective if we target our approach and our response to the people who really need it the most. Uh, and that is exactly what our approach has been from day one. It's base, basic maths, uh, through you, Mr Chair, um, to councillor Cassidy, that if you take a given amount of money and spread it amongst a large number of people, the impact, uh, is reduced and diminished. But if you take that same amount of money and you target it to the people who need it the most, the impact is increased and it has the highest impact. And so that is our approach when it comes to support for, uh, our community going forward. And whether it's through the, uh, community organisations that we're providing a waiver on rates or a rebate on rates, uh, through this submission before us today, or whether it's through the businesses that are employing Brisbane residents, uh, keeping them employed, uh, or whether it's through the residents and businesses who are having difficulty right now paying their rates and we're providing them with options. Now, it is a myth that there is, uh, no support beyond, uh, rates deferral. Uh, this has been mentioned a number of times, the suggestion that the only support being provided is a deferral of rates or a waiver of the interest charges. Uh, what is being provided here is a three-stage process. Uh, so when someone, uh, has difficulty paying the rates and they contact council, uh, there is a very clear process in place to provide support. Now, people can, uh, very easily ask for a deferral of rates for up to nine months. Uh, and that is done very easily. People can also very easily ask for a payment plan. So they can do both. They could ask for their deferral of rates for nine months. And then after nine months, depending on their situation at the time, they could then ask for a payment plan over an extended period of time to repay any outstanding amount based on their capacity to pay or their financial situation. So that is available very easily for people. And people can take either both of those options or one or a combination. But there is also another option available to people that is in place right now. And that is through the independent rate relief tribunal, which council has to provide either full or partial waiver of rates for people in financial difficulty. Now, this tribunal is empowered to sit down and have a look at the specific details and financial situation of rate payers to determine the level of support they need. And they are also empowered to waive rates where people can demonstrate genuine hardship. And so by doing it this way, we can ensure that the support is targeted to those who need it the most. By providing support for community groups like we're doing today and providing a full rates rebate for the current quarter, we're ensuring that those community groups can go on to continue to support so many members of our community. I mentioned that it's National Volunteer Week and these community organisations that we're supporting through the remission or the rebate today are able to help support other people because they're not paying rates to council. Councillor Allen rightly pointed out that Labour councillors and other councillors shouldn't speculate on the outcome of the upcoming budget. That will be released at the appropriate time on the seventeenth of June. And any speculation or suggestions about what might happen is purely that, it's speculation. But I can say, reinforcing what councillor Allen said, that we are mindful in every decision we make that we need to make things as easy as possible in a difficult time. Yet we see Labour saying constantly that we should spend more even though we're getting less in the door. That magic pudding is the reason why Labour always runs their budgets into the ground at all levels of government. We will not do that. We made a commitment to the people of Brisbane that we will go for responsible financial management going forward. We will continue our record of keeping the budget in surplus and we will make the responsible decisions to keep the budget strong. Why? So we can support the community in its time of need. But I can tell you what we won't be doing. We won't be buying an airline. I can assure you that we won't be buying an airline. And this is a kind of outrageous, wasteful decision that we see Labour making because they might think it is politically popular in some way. You will quickly send the state broke if you invest in airlines rather than supporting the community with their water bills. So their electricity bills, like I raised in question time. Take the money that you will lose by investing in an airline and put it towards supporting our community. Put it towards supporting our sporting clubs and community groups who are struggling to pay their water and electricity bills. There's an idea. And Labour councillors should have a chat to their colleagues up at George Street and maybe redirect the money that they are about to plough into Virgin into supporting our community directly. When it comes to the mention about contracts and tendering that we saw from councillor Cassidy, the, the amount of information that is provided to councillors on contracts that our council enters into is incredibly detailed. And you will not find a higher level of information and accountability at any other level of government. If you ask a state member, so the state leader of the opposition, if you ask Deb Frecklington, what information is she provided about the contracts that the state government enters into? You will hear a deafening silence. They don't get access to any of this information. They, all those things are delegated to a public servant or minister. And Deb Frecklington can't find that out. Yet, week after week, we bring this information through transparently to all councillors to see. We have the highest level of accountability and reporting back to our elected members of any level of government. And even at the federal level, the same thing. You will see that a member of the federal parliament cannot easily get access to information on contracts entered into by the federal government. Yet this week, all the contracts are listed, they come through. There is a high level of information and that is appropriate. And we will continue to provide that information. But for councillor Cassidy to suggest that somehow he's not being provided with information is ludicrous and simply ignores the reality of what happens at other levels of government. We will continue to provide this information. But I would also point out that we all recently had the opportunity to log on to a Department of Local Government training session for councillors. And I know many of the councillors here in this meeting were part of that. And it was interesting when the Department of Local Government, the state government department, was outlining the roles and responsibilities of a councillor. And they made it very clear that the role of a councillor and a group of councillors, elected as we are, is to set the strategic direction of the council. And they pointed out that various things are delegated either to the CEO or other council officers, which are operational issues, which including the tendering process and the awarding of contracts, so that we can continue on with the big picture strategic issues of the council. And the use of delegations by delegating procurement, for example, or delegating development assessment is absolutely what is recommended by the state government and the Department of Local Government. So we sit there, we set the strategic direction, we set the political framework.
The term expires. I will now put item A. All those in favour of item A, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And no and raise your hands. The ayes have it. Now, item B, councillor Cassidy, I think it was councillor Cumming, please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of item A, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. And those against, please say no and raise your hand and hold it within the screen so it may be counted.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. Plagues, please read the result. So excuse me a moment. Excuse me. Thank you, councillors. Plagues, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being twenty one in favour, two against and four extensions.
Thank you. I'll now move to item B.
Point of order, Chair.
A point of order, councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea.
May I please just conclude this vote and I'll go straight to you. I'm just going to do item B, that's all. Item B, all those in favour of item B, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. That concludes the Establishment and Coordination Committee report. Please, councillor Landers, I believe you had a point of order.
My apologies, Chair. I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have left the meeting.
And a second please. And councillor, so it's a motion from councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that this council now adjourn for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of fifteen minutes, commencing when all councillors have left the meeting. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no and raise your hand. Councillor Adams, the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, twelfth of May, twenty twenty be adopted. Second that.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, second by councillor Hammond, to the report of City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twelfth of May, twenty twenty be adopted.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week we did a presentation on village precinct projects. I think a project that is much beloved if you're a local councillor, let's receive one, and very exciting for those that are on the list for the next couple of years. Particularly because of the revitalisation we'll see in our local suburbs now, that people are getting very familiar with their local cafes and restaurants, and embracing supporting their local businesses as well. Village precinct projects will be a wonderful way to create those city neighbourhoods and grow on that special time that people have spent over the last couple of weeks in their local area. It's also one of the key principles that have been outlined in Brisbane's Future Blueprint, and we are committed to that as it was clearly told to us by residents through consultation, that this is what they would like to see. As I said, it is about the revitalisation of our suburbs, and we do this by creating attractive, inclusive, safe and accessible precincts to reinforce that strong sense of community and place. Typical improvements that we see through VPPs include local amenity, footpath upgrades, street tree planting, verge gardens, street furniture, as well as the additional public art and creative lighting installations that can be included. This also contributes then to the commercial viability and vitality of our local shopping precincts, creating more lifestyle and leisure options for residents and visitors to enjoy. We have recently completed two village precinct projects in Aspli and Carina. Three VPPs are currently under construction in Dara, Sunnybank and Seven Hills. There's two due to commence construction shortly at Willston Village and Paddington Terraces. Two in the planning and design stage with Ashgrove West and Manly Harbour Village, and eight more listed as future projects over the next term. Boondle, Cooperoo, Camp Hill, Mansfield, Upper Mount伏bat, Rosalie Village, Paddington and Milton. We also had a petition before us last week for a June twenty nineteen development application received for material change of use at the Brisbane Polo Grounds. The use was for a transport depot and preliminary approval to carry out building work at that same depot. The site was ninety seven thousand square metres and forms part of the Brisbane Polo Grounds. It's currently vacant. I understand from councillor Atwood it's got horse adjustment on there at the moment. The closest residential land though is only a hundred and thirty metres away from the proposed building to the south. And council officers felt very clearly that a seven thousand square metre transport depot and ancillary office space, including seventy five onsite car parks, was not what we wanted to see for this site. So we sent it to the state government. They approved the application, subject to conditions. But despite that, council did refuse this application on the ninth of September twenty nineteen, and it is currently in appeal with the P and E Court. And I'll leave debate to the chambers. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Good speakers. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak to item A, the village precinct projects. And the McDowell Ward has had two village precinct projects delivered since twenty eighteen. And the committee learnt about the Aspli Village Precinct project last week, and that's our most recent one. But of the two village precinct projects that we've had, they've been quite different. We've had quite a small revitalisation back in twenty eighteen at the Ainstow Street shops in Churnside West, and it has become a real hive of activity now, a real neighbourhood gathering spot. If you go there on the weekends, on a Saturday, you know, you've got clusters of people lining up outside of Silky Oak Cafe, meeting up, socialising, but it's also given a breath of fresh air into the commercial activity that's happened in this neighbourhood hub, which is nestled right in the middle of a well-established residential area. So it was fantastic to have that delivered back in twenty eighteen. But today, the deputy mayor referred to the Aspli Village Precinct project, which has just been completed. And both councillor Landers and I have a part of that precinct captured in the project. So I'm on the western side of Gimpy Road and Brecon Ridge on the eastern side. And what this project has delivered is connecting those two precincts together, so that there's more vibrant commercial activity, and it provides a hub for residents to come together and socialise. It's becoming quite a precinct for eating, so quite a wonderful addition to our local area. So anybody that is familiar with the strip shopping at Aspli would know that it used to be the hub of the retail activity in the local area, but with some of the other shopping precincts developing or the introduction of new shopping centres, patronage did drop. And so it became a bit dated, and it really did fall, I think, very properly in the scope of the village precinct project realm. And I'm very pleased that we're able to provide now to residents and the local business community opportunity to come together and enjoy everything that our local community has to offer. It was a wonderful activation event in February, and it was wonderful to have you, Lord Mayor, come out to Aspli for Briz Asia. It's the first time it's been held on the north side of Brisbane. And I know that the owners of the precinct really are very keen to perhaps have another activity in their area. It was a wonderful crowd that came along. It really started to encourage locals to come together in ways other than just in a retail or a commercial context. So I'm very excited about the project. There's a wonderful big Aspli sign that heralds your entry into our suburb. And I know councillor Landers and councillor Hammond, whose residents also enjoy the Aspli Village Precinct project upgrade, and I look forward to it getting stronger after we are able to get over the challenges of COVID nineteen.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I just would like to speak on the village precincts projects. I did mention this last week, but this was a specific presentation about village precinct projects. And I just want to put on the record again, my concern that communities that are very strongly indicating their support for village precinct projects dating back two years are being ignored. And I refer to the Graceful Five Ways Shopping Precinct, located on corner of Long Street East, Oxley Road and Park Terrace at Graceville, and the Annalyn Junction Shopping Centre. Both of these were on my budget submission since I started in council twelve years ago, initially as a skip project, as they were then known. And then two years ago, when the LNP changed the name of the project in the budget without advising councillors or asking for suggestions about where they should be, or using the list of skips waiting funding, they introduced village precinct projects. So my community pressured very strongly, and this council has moved through a decision of full council that it will look at Annalyn Junction Shopping Centre for a village precinct project and the Graceful Five Ways for a future village precinct project. Probably getting to the point where I need to be making some questions on notice about which areas, when their requests go in, when they're being funded, how they're being prioritised. Because it's interesting to hear someone like councillor Davis, who wasn't there when the Aspli one went through, talk about how she's had multiple village precinct projects in her ward, yet Tennyson Ward and now in fact Maruka Ward, one of them is on the boundary of two different wards, are still languishing on the waiting list as they've done for many years. So I would just say that there are two full council decisions, recommending that these two locations, the Graceful Five Ways and the Annalyn Junction Shopping Centre, are considered for are considered for village precinct projects. The Graceful Five Ways is a terrible, terrible intersection. It basically has footpaths that are falling apart. You know, it's a higgle-de-piggle intersection. It really needs some TLC. And Annaly Junction, as we all know, the council spent half a million dollars and fixed about 100 metres of footpath. There's still a huge part of that precinct that requires footpath upgrades, new street furniture, you know, things like that. So these two projects are on the waiting list. I expect to see them funded, certainly before projects that are being added at a later date.
Further speakers, councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. We should speak in relation to the village precinct projects as well. There's one proposed for Manly. The Manly commercial area is quite a strong area these days. It's a tightly held area, probably about three landowners probably own about 70% of the commercial land in the area. We've got about, just a little count then, we've got four bars, we've got a number of restaurants, we've got retail, and we've also got commercial as well there. And we had an extensive upgrade of the footpaths, probably 10 plus years ago, but they've never had a skip in that area. And, well, sorry, they probably did have a mini skip at one stage, yes. And I'm looking forward to this project. Winham, just up the road, the other main shopping area, the old shopping area in the Winham-Manly Ward, has had two projects over that time, one way back in the mid 90s, and then another one before the 2016 election, where $500,000 was spent, but everyone after it was gone, apart from one sculptor, and everyone said, where did it go? So, look, I am concerned, this sort of areas, parking's a very sensitive issue, and I'm concerned about that. So I'll be taking a keen interest in the project, and I hope it will be very successful. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'll be speaking to item A. The village precinct programme is an excellent initiative to create a city of vibrant neighbourhoods. I'm excited that work has commenced in Dara to deliver improvements, breathe new life into this shopping precinct, and create a commercial vitality for the area. Dara Station, which runs parallel to the shopping precinct, is in the public transport gateway for the Jamboree Ward. To make this public space attractive, accessible and safe will not just be a win for locals, but for the wider community. On Friday night, my family enjoyed some delicious takeaway from Yum Yum Peaking Duck, a little restaurant in this strip. It's normally a bustling place, but unfortunately, it was very quiet. This investment in our local shopping strip couldn't come at a better time for these local people. It will make the difference between them staying open or closing forever. For those of you who are not familiar with the area, it is scattered with food businesses, restaurants, takeaways, grocers, as well as a chemist and a news agency. The focus of the design was to deliver three core functions: improve safety, achieved by delivering an additional pedestrian crossing, creating a lower speed environment, and improving lighting. It will be the first location to reduce speed to 40 across the entire shopping precinct, highlighting the community's diversity and celebrating the multicultural melting pot within our community. The Creative Outcomes Programme reinforces the local character and pride, and creates a distinctive space for local residents, businesses and visitors to connect and belong. And finally, developing an inclusive and inviting space to shop, socialise and relax. Our priority was to ensure we create spaces that encourage the local community to meet, linger and enjoy. The council officers that I've spoken to are really excited about this project, as they've been able to explore new ideas that are not yet seen in other precincts. I was fortunate to be involved in the consultation process in March, which invited the Dara community to help shape the creative outcomes by sharing stories and working with local photographers, Maan and Y in workshop sessions. Participants were encouraged to bring along plants from their gardens, such as cuttings, flowers and pot plants, or personal objects that held special meaning to them. I brought along a dragon fruit, which in discussions in the workshop, we agree that was an iconic symbol of Dara. I trust that the amazing artists will be able to provide a comprehensive and cohesive artwork design for the mural walls on the corner of Lee Road, the roller doors along Railway Parade, and even incorporate the design within the three zebra crossings. Some of the other highlights to be delivered include illuminated twig seats, revitalised garden beds, additional pedestrian crossings and the installation of bike racks. This project is due to be complete in August 2020. I'm looking forward to partnering with the existing community group, Dara Festival, to reopen and activate this precinct when the COVID restrictions are lifted. Whether you're enjoying a bar me from Dara Takeaway, picking up a coffee from the bakery, or visiting Quee Kwang for a chili mud crab, delight. This investment will encourage people to explore the precinct, boost foot traffic to local businesses, while taking the uniqueness and the multicultural history of this great suburb. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I wish to speak on item A as well, upgrades to the Kenrow Street Karina as part of the village precinct projects. So Kenrow Street in Karina is a small backstreet in Karina and is home to some of the best coffee, pizza, baked goods, music lessons and beauticians. And over the last year, it has gone through a massive transformation. So mid-last year, I sat down with local businesses to start the conversation on what they would like to see, timings and the possible effects to their businesses. It was also great to meet with or read through feedback from over 119 local business owners and residents as what they would like to see as part of this upgrade. One side comment that I did receive from one of the business owners is that you will never upgrade this precinct before Christmas, because governments take forever to build anything. Well, if there's one thing I know, I know that our administration is that terrific at delivering projects. Our construction crew smashed out this upgrade in six weeks with very little impact on local businesses and residents, finishing this project a month early. So thank you to our amazing team. Improvements included new pebble footpath, greenery, seating, bike racks, artwork, and the relocation of bins and a phone box. These upgrades honestly have transformed the area. It looks spectacular. To help show off Kenrow Street businesses and these upgrades, we hosted the Kenrow Street Festival on the 31st of January earlier this year. And we saw 2,500 local residents come out in support of it. All of the businesses got involved as well. We had B sharp music, put on the music, the Baker's Corner put on a massive grazing platter, Polities were hosting mini classes. It was really wonderful. And our plans certainly worked. I've dropped into these local shops many times, and just prior to COVID, they all said that business had never been better. Tanya from Sass Body and Beauty said, the upgrades are just amazing and have been a wonderful welcome addition to the business here. Laura from the Baker's Corner said, we have more business coming in and we've hired more local staff. So it's actually helped the whole local area. It's helped to bring our community here now. Sorry, Michael from Giovanni said, we never thought an upgrade like this would have such an impact, and we've never been busier. So not only have we delivered improvements to the precinct's overall attractiveness, safety and identity, but we've seen the organic reconnection of Karina while supporting small family businesses. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Councillor Griffiths? Sorry, yeah, yeah, it's just I'm muting. Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just in relation to the village precinct project, I also just wanted to flag my support for the programme and certainly would welcome the programme in Maruka Ward. I note that councillor Johnston raised the issue of the Annaly Shopping Centre, which I know for years she's been working on, trying to get some sort of action by council in that area. And certainly I'll be doing the same as well. We, as a council, shouldn't neglect areas that are on major roads. Shopping centres are on major roads. They offer us significant opportunities to revitalise business and look for opportunities for business that works with such a heavy traffic flow going past or through their shopping centre. I know many residents in Annaly would like to see improvements there. They'd like to see the library revitalised and the community centre revitalised. They'd actually like to see the Lord Mayor deliver on his commitment or the previous Lord Mayor's commitment about fixing the footpath through Annaly. And they'd also like to see their shopping centre refreshed, as other shopping centres in Brisbane have had that experience. I've represented Maruka for 17 years, but about 20 years ago, the shopping centre there was one of the first done up under the Sawley administration, and certainly been one of the most successful in terms of shopping centre improvements. The only thing is, with 20 years passing by, there is need for a refresh and a revitalisation of the work that has been done there. And I would also encourage council to be involved in looking at ways that we can refresh Maruka Shopping Centre and make it a very effective and good business place, but a good community place for actually one of the most diverse communities we have in Brisbane. So I would like to work with the administration on both those sites, improving them for the people of Maruka Ward. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor, excuse me, I think I saw councillor Cook, please. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to speak on item A as well, the village precinct projects. I just wanted to put on record some of the history behind the village precinct projects in my local area. So we currently have the Seven Hills Village Precinct Project underway. That was after a decade-long campaign by myself and also the former councillor from Woodingside, councillor Sutton, to upgrade this particular precinct in Seven Hills. There were multiple petitions and community campaigns over that time, and ultimately it resulted in 1.2 million being allocated to Seven Hills. That work is underway. Great to hear that Karina was completed in six weeks, but we have had multiple delays with our project. I know that the businesses there have been suffering through COVID, and in some ways, it couldn't be a better time for these works to be finalised. So I'm hoping to see that finalisation in the coming weeks and certainly before the end of financial year. But this project, in terms of what it will do for Seven Hills, it is a small precinct, but there is quite a variety of shop frontages there. And one of the biggest issues coming out of the consultation was specifically around parking. Now, the consultation process that was held, there were over 100 submissions that came back, and about 80% of those were in relation to some of the parking issues experienced in the course of. Council didn't address that issue specifically, and that was disappointing, I think, because there have been plans developed to improve parking in that local area, and certainly something that I will be looking at for the new financial year is to undertake those works out of the community fund. But I think that when we look at these projects, we do need to have consideration for the particular requirements of that local community and really tailor our projects to those local community's needs. So there is another matter outstanding from this village precinct project, and that is for the reduction of speed for the street. I know that there was consultation happening with the state government about that, so that there could be some road artwork undertaken and completed as part of the village precinct project. So I'm hopeful that that will still occur, Mr Chair. But I want to thank the businesses for their support and their patience. They were the ones that went out and got hundreds of signatures in support of this project. I'm sure they will be very pleased to see the completion of it. The other thing I wanted to talk about in relation to village precinct projects is Oxford Street. So we presented another petition to council in relation to Oxford Street. And I think that, given the Lord Mayor's commitment, which has been confirmed by councillor Adams around the City of Lights commitment of $200,000 for Oxford Street, this would actually be a very good opportunity to start doing some of the planning for a village precinct project for Oxford Street. We did have a discussion about that in committee, and that there would potentially be alternate sources of funds available, perhaps not under this programme, but in some of the revitalisation that we might see across the city. So I'm very interested in progressing that. I know that the traders on Oxford Street have been very proactive in their approach to this issue, and again, I thank them for their support. I think the biggest issue with village precinct projects, and councillor Johnston has flagged this in her comments, is about the level of transparency and accountability in the decision-making process with these types of projects. Certainly since my time in council, there have been multiple questions and requests for long lists of projects, for transparency around the decision-making process and how funds are allocated to these projects, what impact, if any, things like petitions have on the process, and specifically what the decision-making process is. We're not talking about small amounts of money here. We're talking about million-dollar projects, and certainly the fund itself is in the tens of millions. So I think that the people of Brisbane certainly deserve to have that information. I think that it would help inform local communities about how they go about advocating in their local areas for these types of upgrades. And I think that it is only fair that we provide that information, not only for the residents, but also for councillors, if they are looking at advocating on behalf of their community for upgrades in their local areas as well. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Strung.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, I want to speak on, I would like to speak on item A as well, the village precinct projects. Let me first say that I was, my ward was the beneficiary of one of these projects. Last year, it was finalised in August, and it was the Biode Street refresh, actually, because Biode Street had received a skips programme about 20 years before. And the refresh was undertaken, and the residents around that Biode Street precinct are really happy to see that undertaken. I mean, this project is really a bipartisan-type project, isn't it? I don't think there would be any councillor that wouldn't want one of these in their wards as many as possible, I suppose, as often as possible. It really does make a difference to a neighbourhood, to that area of our wards. One of the nicest things that came out of the Biode Street project, Mr Chair, was the repurposing of some stone street furniture that was established or put in place back some 20 years ago, that actually had indigenous and other artwork on it. And when the team came and saw me and said, well, you know, this is what we think that would look good there, and they consulted, and then we consulted the community, it was more of a contemporary look to what was already there, or an upgraded or more modern look that they were wanting to go, and that's what the community wanted as well. But there was this beautiful stone street furniture that was there from the previous skips programme. And so what we did was, I said, well, listen, I don't want to lose the artwork. Can we put it somewhere else? Can we use it in another park? Can we use it somewhere else in my ward? So we came up with an idea that it could be repurposed into Kev Hooper Park, just near Freedom Place, where the Vietnamese celebrate or commemorate morning ceremony. And so it was a bit of a challenge to council officers. They had to pull it all apart and then transport it, and then we had to put it in place in the new park. And that took some number of months, but it was a real way of capturing something that was established about 20 years ago and to repurpose it. So we didn't waste it. It continues to occupy space in my ward in a very important park in Forest Lake Ward. Now, I've got two other shopping areas that I would like to see a skips programme, or one being a refresh, another one a skips programme, or a village precinct project commence. And the one probably that needs the refresh as well is the Skylark Street, which was done about 20 years ago as well, and that really could do with an upgrade. And I'll make sure that it's in my next budget submission. Along with another one that seems to be forgotten about, that was probably one of the nicest shopping areas in my ward, and it's in Richlands, or just on the border of Richlands and Anala, and it's called Coconut Grove, which is just above the Bluefin Sporting Club or Fishing Club. And I think it could do, I think a million dollars or, or thereabouts would really refresh and really revitalise an area that used to be a, a rural hub of the community back in the fifties and sixties. We had a cinema there, and the building still exists, it's been repurposed into a, into a church. But the, 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 the buildings are there, and, and it would really take with one of these village precincts programme. So listen, I, I just want to identify that to our Chair, that those, those are two projects I would like to see in the future. And thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy?
Thanks Chair, just briefly on this item, the village precincts, village precinct projects. And the mention of the Sues Corner project that will occur in the 2020-2024 term. This is something that I started a petition about last year, I think that was. And it's great to have gained community support for that project and have that included for a project going forward. We've had funding for the first stage, which is, I suppose, the technical aspects of that and the, the assessment as to what can be done. It's a challenging site on Sandgate Road, one of the busiest roads to run through my ward, probably only second to the Gateway Motorway, intersecting one of council's main arterial roads and Beams Road through there. Access both by, via vehicle and pedestrian and cyclists has been difficult for some time. So I know the team has been looking at increasing the pedestrian and cyclists amenities there and the experience of people spending some time in and around the Sues Corner precinct there. So I think this is an area that has been forgotten about for quite some time. So it's great to have been able to work with the community to get this included. And to see this project through will be one of my priorities this term. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Shree?
Thanks Chair, just also wanted to speak on the village precincts item and remind councillor Adams that Boundary Street in West End is long overdue for an upgrade. It's been a couple of decades since any major work was done through that strip. And I think it's high time we put a bit more investment into it from council's capital works budget. I understand Boundary Street has previously been listed for a village precincts upgrade, but I wanted to make sure, and perhaps you can confirm that it is indeed still on the list as identified as needing work at some point. Acknowledged that there are competing budget priorities from across the city. But Boundary Streets, Boundary Street has seen particularly high growth in foot traffic. There's obviously been a lot of new development and a lot more people around than there were a few years ago. So I think there's a particularly strong case for some upgrades to that precinct. And obviously, the community would welcome the opportunity for some detailed consultation. Yeah, look forward to talking to you about that again in the future.
Further speakers? I see no hands, councillor Adams, the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank all the councillors for making very clear what they would like to see. Again, another more, more, more please, but please decrease the revenue wherever you can, because you're not doing enough for the community in recovery. So thank you very much for that. Look, there are some fantastic VPPs that are on the list to be done over the next four years. We need to remember, as this too, holistically across council, there is many and varied ways that community groups through these business centres can be supported. The Economic Development Team, which is separate to the actual city planning team, are working through local business partnership initiatives. I find it quite amazing that councillor Griffith says nothing's been spent on Maruka in the last ten years. But if you go on the Brisbane City website, council website, you can very clearly see the Maruka Marketplace Destination Plan, the work we did with the traders right along Bo Desert Road there, the feedback, the implementation, even resulting in a great night markets in April last year, obviously, which they couldn't hold this year. But there are various ways to do this, and it's not all about infrastructure. I think what councillor Shree was talking about sounds very definitely out of what our scope is in village precincts projects. But as Cara Cook mentioned, $200,000 to City of Lights down Oxley Street, that is no short, Oxley Road, sorry, Oxley Street, Oxford Street, is no small amount of money. We are trying to make sure that we can support businesses right across the city. What you see in the list of the nine that are in planning stage, if not being delivered or finished, and the next six or eight that we have for the next term is a wide range right across the city. I do not know what the extended list is. I haven't asked the extended list because I have my plans for the next four years as the Chair of Planning, and I will be delivering these over the next four years. But there is also local business partnerships, City of Lights, local artworks, and a variety of ways through our grants for shopfront activations and so many other ways, not even to mention the Recovery Task Force, that will be supporting these businesses right across Brisbane. Thank you, Mr Chair.
If you'll now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And those against, say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, Public and Active Transport Committee, please. Councillor Murphy?
Thanks very much Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the 12th of May 2020, be adopted.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Owen, the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 12th of May 2020, be adopted. Councillor Murphy, is there any debate?
Yeah, thanks very much Chair. Well, last week's committee presentation was on the initial consultation undertaken as part of the Green Bridges Programme. So this involved a four-week citywide community engagement period from the 11th of November to the 6th of December in 2019. The purpose of this was to seek detailed feedback on the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge and initial feedback on the proposed alignments for the Tuwong to West End, St Lucia to West End, Breakfast Creek and Bell Bowery to Wakehold Green Bridges. The committee heard that the community and stakeholder engagement activities included direct mailouts, which we sent to households, thirteen community information sessions, ten pop-up stalls at ferry terminals, bridges and locations along the river's edge, letters and emails issued to a hundred and thirty key stakeholders and representatives of industry, briefings to eleven key stakeholder representatives at the bridge, around the bridge landing points, including University of Queensland, Bicycle Queensland, RSCQ, Sunland Group and Dexus. We did online engagement as well, so that included dedicated webpages for each bridge on council's website, an online survey seeking feedback on each bridge and the overarching Green Bridges Programme, updates sent to over two and a half thousand subscribers, social media encouraging participants to council's online survey, as well as taking overall community feedback on the entire programme. Now, approximately sixty percent of respondents indicated that they would use the Kangaroo Bridge, the Kangaroo Point Bridge daily or weekly. There was strong support for the preferred alignment from Alice Street and Edward Street to the roundabout at Scott Street, with approximately seventy-two percent of respondents supporting this. There was also strong support from residents and commuters for the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge. And approximately fifty percent of respondents indicated that they would use the bridge daily or weekly. Sixty-two percent agreed with the alignment from Kingsford Smith Drive at Albion to the Breakfast Creek Road at Newstead. There was also broad support from, for the Tuwong to West End Green Bridge, with about sixty percent indicating that they would use the bridge daily or weekly. Sixty-seven percent were in favour of the alignment from near Archer Street at Tuwong to Orlly Park near Forbes Street at West End. The St Lucia to West End Green Bridge was also supported, with approximately sixty-three percent agreeing with proposed alignment from the corner of Keith and Macquarie Streets, St Lucia to Boundary Street in West End. Approximately fifty percent of survey respondents said they would use the bridge daily or weekly. Many opposed the bridge catering for buses or any other public transport. And this is something that the Lord Mayor has already listened to, having announced on the 23rd of March that these bridges will progress for walking and cycling only. Turning to the Bell Bowery Green Bridge, the feedback was a little bit different. Of the five hundred and forty-five survey respondents, approximately sixty-three percent said they would never or rarely use the Green Bridge. Only twenty-eight percent were in favour of the proposed alignment. Fifty-seven point four percent of survey respondents either strongly disagreed or disagreed with, with the proposal being nine point six percent. So while we can see that Green Bridges overall are welcomed by the people of Brisbane, the proposed Bell Bowery to Wakehold crossing has not had the same level of support as some of the other bridges. The local councillors on either side of the river there are continuing the consultation process, and both have written to their community recently. I encourage anyone with a view about the proposed Green Bridges in Jambury or Pullenvale Ward to contact their local councillors, councillor Adam and councillor Hutton. As the only two new councillors in this place after the election, I think it's only fair that both councillor Adam and councillor Hutton get the opportunity to speak to their communities about this issue and ask them what they would like to see there. So I thank both of those councillors for taking the lead on this issue and advocating on behalf of their community. This initial feedback, Chair, will shape and define the future stages of each Green Bridge project, including the design, development and the preparation of business cases. There will be further opportunities for residents to have their say on the future stages of each bridge, both in 2020 and further beyond. There was also a petition that we passed at committee last week requesting council to include funding in the annual budget and the local government infrastructure plan for a new ferry terminal or other high-capacity, high-frequency public transport service along the western side of the West End Peninsula with delivery in the next three years. And I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Shree?
Thanks Chair, I'm pleased to speak on both the Green Bridges consultation report and the petition regarding the City Cat Terminal. And I want to start by thanking and congratulating the administration for its support for the footbridges. I think it's really good to see these projects progressing. I'm obviously very keen in particular to see the West End to Tuwong Footbridge prioritised. I think that's a much higher priority than the footbridge from West End to St Lucia. I understand that obviously the Kangaroo Point Footbridge is the furthest progressed in terms of design work and, and planning. But I strongly encourage the administration to bring forward that West End to Wong Footbridge as well. The amount of population growth we've seen down in that western side of West End in particular has been dramatic. And it's, it's really causing serious traffic congestion issues. We're seeing a lot of compounding issues across the inner south transport network. So the footbridge would be very welcome, and the sooner the better. I, in terms of the consultation report, I've asked councillor Murphy this already, and I'm sure he'll, it's on his to-do list. We would really like to see publication of the detailed feedback from everyone who participated in the consultation. So it would be great to see a summary of the demographics, how old were the people who responded, where did the people who responded live, any other demographic data that was collected as part of the survey, and importantly, what did they actually say? I, I understand there were some pretty big variations between the different bridges about how much support they received. And it would be great to be able to drill down into the survey details. So just as with development applications, we publish comments from residents in detail. We should be able to publish anonymised survey responses from a big public consultation like this Green Bridge. And I think that's really important in the interest of transparency, given that this is such a, these are such large public projects that will continue for quite a few years to come. We need to be really sure that all councillors are aware of the feedback received. Certainly as a local councillor, I would like to know what my local residents have been saying about the bridge, but about the three bridges in my ward. But the fact that the survey data collected isn't publicly available means that I don't actually know what residents have been telling council, unless they've also told it to me directly or participated in my direct local survey. So I understand councillor Murphy will take that up, and I look forward to receiving that data or seeing that data published in the near future. In particular though, I think that is relevant to the question of the, of the Mogul Bridge. Because if there is such low support coming through from that initial consultation, it would be really good to understand how many people participated and where did they live and what were their demographics? Because obviously, for a Green Bridge and a bus bridge, the, there might be variations across different suburbs in terms of who's going to use it. It might be the case, for example, that local residents living immediately adjacent to a bridge site might see less value in a bus bridge. Whereas cross suburb, cross-city commuters might see more value, or vice versa. So I guess the point is that we do need to see that data so that we can better understand why it is that support was so low for the Mogul Green Bridge and understand what other factors might be at play there. Just the other important element that flows from this bridge consultation, and I want to put this on the Lord Mayor's radar as well, although I'm not sure if the Lord Mayor is still involved in this meeting. But I'll also, again, draw it to the attention of councillor Cunningham, who's Chair of Parks, and also to councillor Adams, who's Chair of City Planning, which is just that the, these bridges require holistic planning in terms of their transport impacts on the inner south side. And in fact, councillor McLaughlin should have this on his radar as well through your chair, that each of these bridges is going to be drawing and creating more active transport commuter traffic around them. And particularly for the Kangaroo Point Footbridge, but also for the West End to Wong Bridge and perhaps eventually the West End St Lucia Bridge, we need really clear long-term plans about where cyclists and pedestrians are going to be travelling. And for the West End to Wong Bridge, I think it's now overdue that we have a clear plan for Riverside Drive. So that Riverside Drive precinct is going to collect a lot of additional cycling traffic if the West End to Wong Bridge goes ahead. And so it would be a shame if, over the next few years, we make changes to the Riverside Drive parkland, which reduce its capacity as an active transport corridor. And then in a few years, the bridge goes in and then suddenly there's a lot more cyclists moving through Riverside Drive. It would be much better if we had a holistic plan for Riverside Drive that contemplates the future footbridge and, and plans for that accordingly. And similarly, in Kangaroo Point, there have been a few recent intersection upgrade proposals, such as the intersection of River Terrace and Main Street, which only proposed quite narrow footpaths and seemed not to be cognizant of the future Kangaroo Point Footbridge. So logically, if we're putting a footbridge in Kangaroo Point, all the intersections leading towards that footbridge, you'd want wider footpaths and dedicated bike lanes so that the connections to the bridge are optimised. But it seems like currently, the way council plans for intersection upgrades and road infrastructure projects is not paying enough close attention to future traffic volumes in terms of active transport that are likely to be generated from the footbridge. So I hope that's on the administration's radar as well. Just also wanted to, again, reinforce the importance of offsetting any losses of green space. This picks up on a comment that the mayor made previously regarding the Green Bridges, which is that the landing of a bridge might only lose a few square metres of a, of a park and might only have a very, very small impact on a park. But in an inner-city area where green space is in such short supply and population density is really, really high, and a lot of residents don't have their own backyards, it's particularly important that any losses of parkland as a result of council infrastructure projects are offset by the creation of new public parkland nearby. So even if it's only in, for example, the West End to Wong Bridge, even if we only lose a hundred square metres or two hundred square metres of Riverside green space, that still has a significant impact on the amount of usable parkland in that community. And as I said, residents don't have their own backyards, so they really rely heavily on this public green space. So the sensible thing to do would be for council to include in its project budget an allocation to acquire new sites or join insights to expand public parkland so that we can create new public green space to offset any losses of green space arising from the footbridges. We already offset lost trees in a similar fashion, and we definitely need to be offsetting lost green space. I'm very, very excited about the footbridges, but I think it's in order for them to continue to enjoy strong public support and in order for those footbridges to not receive last-minute objections from residents, it'll be important that there isn't a material loss of public green space. And the Lord Mayor's comments in the chamber and previously have given me some concern that the administration's a little bit cavalier about that. Like I said, even if it's only a few hundred square metres that we're losing to a bridge, it needs to be offset because it's not just the bridge itself, it's all the pathways leading to it and the changes in how that space can be used due to high volumes of cyclists, et cetera. Finally, and this touches on both the bridges consultation, but also the petition regarding the City Cat Terminal. As I've maintained previously, the City Cat is a really high, high need for that western side of the West, West End Peninsula. There's no longer any extra capacity on Montague Road or Vulture Street to carry more commuters either through private vehicle transport or public transport. So we're going to need another high-capacity public transport option for the western side of West End, and a City Cat Terminal would seem to be the most logical option. I've said this previously, and I'll say it again, I think a new City Cat Terminal is a higher priority than a footbridge from West End to St Lucia. Obviously, I think the highest priority is a footbridge. Obviously, I think the highest priority is a footbridge from West End to Tuwong, but a City Cat Terminal for the western side of West End is a higher priority than the St Lucia Foot Bridge. There are roughly 10,000 people still to move in to that precinct on the western side of West End, above and beyond the thousands that have already moved in there in recent years. So at some point, we need a comprehensive strategy as to how all those residents are going to move in and out of that part of West End. And to date, I think the transport planning seems to have been a little bit piecemeal and maybe there's other discussions that I'm not privy to. But it's clear that we're going to need more public transport capacity and simply putting on longer buses for the Blue City Glider just isn't going to cut it, I hate to say. If it were that easy and we could just put in more long buses, then great. But it's not going to be enough to carry the volumes of people. We're talking about, like I said, 10,000 people just to the western side of Montague Road and that doesn't include the thousands of additional workers who will be commuting into West End and South Bank over the coming years. So we're going to see a rise in the residential population. We're also predicting a rise in the working, the population of workers who travel into that suburb from other parts of the city. The South Brisbane Transport and Mobility Study also identifies this need, the state government document. So that's something that really needs to be rectified and I might wrap up there.
Your time expired. All right, further speakers? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks Chair, I wish to speak on item A, the Green Bridge initial consultation report. Just quickly, we all know that in March 2019, minutes after taking over as Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna declared his intention to build these bridges and it's very exciting as the councillor for Walter Taylor being the landing point for two of them. And I was very interested to watch the council committee presentation last week and congratulations to the excellent work that's gone into that initial consultation report. The initial consultation outcomes report, I should say. And just briefly on the community consultation, which is essentially what I'll be talking about, I sent out about 4,000 consultation letters and received a huge response through St Lucia and Tuwong. I'd walk down the street to the local shops and people would be bailing me up about how good it was and how it would improve connectivity, reduce congestion and so on and so forth. So I'm not surprised that 1,068 people attended community information sessions like the ones at the South Brisbane Sailing Club, the St Lucia Community Hall and the Tuwong Library. I attended all of those and it was very interesting to hear different people's opinions, to get their feedback and so on and so forth. And there were really good pieces of feedback such as making sure we include shade, ideas for landscaping, ideas for the shape and the design of the bridges. And you know, some people said we even need lookouts on the bridges so we can enjoy what is essentially a world-class asset, which is our big river. Importantly, the consultation report noted that 72% of people agree the bridges will improve connections with existing networks. And that is a phenomenal number of people who support the idea that these bridges will improve connectivity, which will as a result reduce congestion on the roads because we're opening up alternative forms of transport. Specifically, I'm talking about St Lucia and Tuwong Bridges here, specifically because those are the two in the Walter Taylor Ward. And most importantly, these bridges will only be for active transport. The community feedback was heated and I'm really personally very impressed that there won't be buses in St Lucia or Tuwong because there's nowhere for the buses to go, to clog up the local streets. Also heated was a very determined action from local residents in St Lucia around the Guyat Park. And Guyat Park is a gem for the local area and people were very concerned that the green space in Guyat Park would be destroyed as part of this bridge. So it's quite a relief and gratifying to see that Keith Street at the edge of UQ near St Lucia Bowls Club and St Thomas's River View Kindergarten has been chosen. And if you know that area Chair, you would know that the streets around there are very small, windy and hilly little streets and they just would not be suitable for buses. Unlike some other places, this just would not service a bus route without massive up, up disruption to the social fabric of that suburb. Likewise with the Tuwong feedback, the landing points are quite limited. There are very few places that the bridge could go. So it's gratifying to see that Archer Street was chosen because that is connecting on to the existing network. And on the other side of the river, I understand that there's some work being done over there and my colleague councillor Shree's already mentioned some of the locations over there. But it was very good to see that a place, I think it's called the GPS Rowing, Brisbane and GPS Rowing Club on the West End side is near the site chosen for the landing point. So that's, that's good to see. That means that it will be almost across the river from the Archer Street site. And there is a very good outcome for these bridges for cycle commuters because having these two bridges will create a much shorter way of getting from Tuwong to the university. It may sound counterintuitive that you need to cross the river twice, but you will have much easier access to flat, wide roads on which you can choose to ride instead of going up in the squiggly roads, as I call them, parallel to Sir Fred Chanel Drive in the St Lucia area. So not only will these two bridges create a shorter route, it will also be less hilly and probably a lot faster to ride from Tuwong to the university. And moving forward, there is ongoing technical investigations to determine the precise landing points, as they should be. The design and prep continues obviously. And the thing that I'm sure councillor Shree, through you Chair, would agree, further community consultation so we can decide on landing points, design aspects, so on and so forth. So I would like to congratulate the work that's gone into this report. I think it's fantastic information. It shows us really good outcomes from community consultation. Huge support for nearly every aspect of what was proposed. And I'd also like to congratulate the council tech who seems to have fixed the problems this week. Thanks Chair.
Further speakers? I see no hands, councillor Johnston.
Yes, just very briefly, I would just say a couple of things about this. Councillor Shree, you can definitely go and look at all the, through you Mr Chairman, councillor Shree, you can definitely go and look at all the consultation feedback by making a file request. So you'll, you'll absolutely be able to look at that and that's what I normally do with neighbourhood plans because they don't tell you any detail in that either. So I understand your frustration with it, but you can make a file request and get that. Look, I don't support five green bridges. It may be that one or two is certainly worthwhile, but five absolutely is unaffordable in the current financial climate and certainly unnecessary in my view. Clearly, one of them needs to be cancelled immediately and that's the Mogul Road one. I was fascinated to hear the new councillor out there saying he wants cars on the Green Bridge. Now, when I suggested perhaps we should consider that at Eleanor Chanel, the then Lord Mayor jumped down my throat like nobody's business. So I'm really surprised that councillor Murphy thinks it's a great idea for councillor Adaman to be out there consulting on whether there should be a new car bridge. Clearly, that's way outside the scope of what was proposed, even within the LMP's own project.
I might end up like you.
Councillor Cumming, please, please councillors resist the urge to interject.
It was a good interjection, I suspect you won't. But it was really interesting to hear him in committee last week talking about it. And I understand his residents' frustration out there. They've got terrible, terrible congestion problems with Mogul Road and I'm sure they're desperate for other transport solutions, you know, to move around the city. But there are other bridge, road bridge priorities in Brisbane and it would be very disappointing if suddenly the Green Bridge announced by the LMP as part of their budget, sorry, their election commitment suddenly turned into a new road bridge, particularly when there are other bridge commitments, particularly in my ward, that should have some further priority. So thank you and I look forward to seeing the scope of these bridges being revised back. Let's just do what's essential here, we don't have to build five.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. I just want to speak on the presentation about the Green Bridges briefly and put on record our concerns around not only how these bridges have been costed, how they will be funded and also the consultation process and the outcome of that consultation. It's pretty clear now, I think, that these Green Bridges probably need to go back to the drawing board. How they were announced initially by the Lord Mayor when he became Lord Mayor was a bit of a farce. When we asked in the previous committee how the locations and the function of these bridges was determined, councillor Adams, the then Chair, said they were basically dots on a map. They were just arbitrarily chosen, there wasn't widespread consultation with, with people who would be using these bridges, let alone key stakeholder groups as to what the best mobility solutions for Brisbane will be, whether they would be a pedestrian-only bridge, a bike bridge, a public transport bridge or in fact a car bridge, as councillor Adaman has discovered out his way. So the process in which was entered by this administration was to get a graphic design of to chuck a couple of dots on a map of the River of Brisbane and then to go out with some very vague consultation, consultation to people in Brisbane, which was in the form of an advertising campaign leading up to the last election and to offer people very little information as to what the ramifications would be for these bridges being pedestrian and cyclists only as opposed to being proper green bridges, proper public transport bridges. And we heard councillor Murphy say that there were 2,500 emails sent out to people on some email list. There was some direct mail to people who would be directly affected right by these bridges. And you can understand that people who would be directly affected by a bridge would have particularly strong views about the function of that bridge. That's fair enough for those people on either side of where these bridges will land. But what isn't clear, and councillor Shree points this out, that the full consultation report hasn't been released as to who was consulted right across the city about what those ramifications would be. So the people who will be most disadvantaged of these bridges not being genuine green bridges and carrying public transport and having dedicated public transport corridors on them are those that are most far away from the river itself. So the people, the uni students coming from Wyndham or out in Sandgate or, you know, other places around this city and people who are commuting either side of the river, they're the ones that are going to be most disadvantaged by this administration taking a cut-price approach. And I think that's what this is actually about. We know that the Kangaroo Point Bridge, which is the most costed, I suppose, of all these projects, will come in somewhere between 250, 200 and 250 million dollars and that's for a pedestrian and cyclist version only. We have heard that there's about half a billion dollars committed to five green bridges. So when you start adding that up, you know that this programme of five green bridges is going to cost somewhere between one and 1.5 billion dollars. And what this Lord Mayor has allocated is 500 or 550 million dollars over the term of the projects to these bridges. So we know that they are severely under-costed when it comes to the announcements and we know that they are completely and utterly unfunded as well. The Bell Bowery Bridge, we know, is now in disarray because councillor Adaman has insisted that that will be, the only way that will proceed is if it is a car bridge. And councillor Murphy said in the committee last week that if he wants a car bridge, he can go to councillor McLaughlin and ask for funding because that will not be delivered under this programme. So if he goes out there and whips his community up into an anti-green bridge campaign, we know that there's one less. And that probably works for councillor Murphy because we know that these bridges are under-costed and unfunded. So he's probably thinking that's a great thing, that councillor Adaman can go out there and ditch a piece of infrastructure for his community to meet a budget black hole on the Green Bridges. But these being exclusively bike and pedestrian bridges is very, very short-sighted. There shouldn't be an either/or, there shouldn't be either bus bridges or pedestrian cyclist bridges. To be truly green bridges, they need to be both. And we know that dedicated public transport infrastructure leads to a boost in public transport usage. What we're going to see out of when we emerge from this COVID-19 crisis is about 20 years' worth of congestion on the streets of Brisbane being fast-forwarded into one year of time. We know that we're going to have to have solutions that will move people around our city. They are going to need lots of different ways of doing that. Some of those are walking and cycling and some of those are going to be public transport, of course. We just heard councillor Johnston talk about the Eleanor Chanel Bridge and the LMP here like to talk about history, they like to talk about Saul administration and the Clem Jones administration. Here's a little bit of history, that when the Green Bridge, the Eleanor Chanel Bridge was proposed, the Liberals, the then Liberals fought tooth and nail to ensure that there wasn't, there weren't buses using that bridge to cross the river. They wanted to, they wanted to hamstring that bridge and ensure that it didn't deliver what it is today and a real congestion busting project. Granted councillor Johnston, through you Chair, there's not cars using that bridge like councillor Adaman wants on his. And we know that they fought tooth and nail against other river-based public transport as well, particularly City Cats when they were introduced. So the hypocrisy of the LMP and the hypocrisy of councillor Shree in opposing these bridges being proper green bridges is actually quite astounding. What we need to do is to see the full details of the consultation reports, see who was talked to, who was listened to, who was ignored, and then have a proper process of where we can identify the infrastructure that is most needed to ensure that Brisbane emerges from not only.
Point of order Chair? Point of order Chair?
Apologies, I was unmute, sorry, excuse me, point of order to councillor Shree.
Just checking if councillor Cassidy would take a quick question.
Councillor Cassidy, will you take a question?
No.
He declines. Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
So what we, what we actually need here is instead of, instead of this administration shooting from the hip and using this as a process to advertise themselves in the lead-up to an election and then trying to figure out in vain how they can build five bridges at $100 million each when in reality they will cost somewhere between 200 and 300 million dollars each. Instead of that, and instead of having a so-called Greens councillor who runs around and says that he needs this infrastructure to get people moving around his ward, but is rallying against the very best kind of infrastructure that we can build in and around his ward, which is public transport infrastructure. I think this process is fundamentally broken and we need to start over again. We need to fundamentally look at what kind of river crossings we need. The process needs to include looking at where additional car crossings need to be, where pedestrian cyclist-only infrastructure needs to be. The Kangaroo Point Bridge is a good case in point for that. And where genuine green bridges need to be. And look at the ramifications of excluding and not telling people the genuine benefits of having proper green bridges and public transport connections over a river. So I think this process has been fundamentally broken from the start and I think the people of Brisbane are going to pay dearly for it if it continues this way.
Further speakers? I see none, councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair and I thank all councillors who contributed to the debate on this item. Well, let's, let's start where we left off. And I, I do have fairly low expectations of the contributions that councillor Cassidy will make to debates in a bipartisan way. But he has exceeded those low expectations today again. So he said a couple of things. He said that we're going back to the drawing board with these bridges now. And I think if he'd actually listened to the committee presentation, which happened at committee where he was asking questions, he would have found that, as I said just before, four out of five bridges were supported by the community. he would have found that, as I said just before, four out of five bridges were supported by the community. And we are proceeding with four out of the five bridges.
Point of order to you, Cassidy.
A claim to be misrepresented.
Councillor Murphy.
Sure. There's only one bridge here where we are in fact going back to the drawing board and we're doing some further consultation on it before making a decision. We've been very open and transparent about that. Councillor Cassidy also said that we wouldn't release the consultation report. I said at the committee meeting, and councillor Sri was there, because councillor Sri actually asked the question whether we would release the consultation report. And I said if we can appropriately anonymise the data in the consultation report, like we do when it comes to neighbourhood planning, when the community has their say, we'd have no problem with releasing that report to all councillors. It's a public document. We're not hiding anything here. We're in fact acting on the recommendations of the consultation. So, you know, I don't know why he would come in here and say something different to what he actually learned at the committee meeting when the question was asked. He also said that this programme is underfunded. The Lord Mayor has always been clear from the outset of this programme, the council's contribution to these five Green Bridges was $550 million, a capped contribution, and that that would be what we would deliver for these projects. Now, if the state government wanted to get involved, if the federal government wanted to contribute money, we'll certainly be going to those governments for that money when business cases are prepared for some of the later bridges, that we would be willing to seek further funding and that we would in fact need to seek further funding. There's been no secret of that. The Lord Mayor has made that abundantly clear. But a half a billion dollars is a very significant commitment for this council to make because we truly believe in this project. So, I mean, this idea that we've undercooked the funding somehow, the Lord Mayor's been very clear right from the start on that. In terms of us actually being able to deliver this project, I mean, the Labour Party did say, when we came up with Transapex back in 2004, that it was a five-tunnel fantasy that could never be delivered. Well, four of those five tunnels now operate. Four of those five tunnels now carry traffic each and every day, and they're taking traffic off our surface roads and reducing congestion around the city. I mean, they never believe in us when we say we're going to do those things, and we go ahead and do it anyway. But it's interesting. I mean, councillor Cassidy, he's now talking about Green Bridges. But when did he say nothing about Green Bridges? At the election we just had in March. And Labour has a shocking record on Green Bridges. So from 2007, the then-premier Peter Beatty and the deputy premier Bly announced a vision to install a series of pedestrian bridges, which would make Brisbane one of Australia's most pedestrian-friendly cities. In 2009, on the eve of the Kuruilpa Bridge state opening, the state government announced it was considering a crossing linking the CBD to Kangaroo Point. In March 2010, infrastructure minister Stirling Hinchcliffe said the bridges were back on the city's agenda. In 2014, the ALP voted against the city plan where a connection from Kangaroo Point to the CBD is shown. Labour didn't support the city centre masterplan and voted against the city centre neighbourhood plan where several of the bridges were identified. In 2014, Milton Dick, who was leader of the opposition then in this place, said about the Kangaroo Point Bridge, Brisbane City Council can't afford these projects without accruing more debt or increasing rates and charges. In May 2015, the Labour Party's position became then that the bridge needed to be fast-tracked. And Rod Harding said he would fast-track construction of pedestrian bridges in Kangaroo Point in the CBD if elected. So the Labour Party have taken multiple positions on Green Bridges throughout the entire time that they've been in this place, both in here and at state government. So I would suggest rather than giving lectures to us on how this project should actually run, that first councillor Cassidy gets together his Labour colleagues, figures out a consistent position on Green Bridges because they haven't been able to find one in the last decade. Hopefully, they can do some work, come up with a consistent position, and get back to us in due course. But I can tell councillor Cassidy, if he really genuinely wants to be helpful here, if he wants to be useful to the administration, he can sort out the problem with the Kangaroo Point super yacht mooring issue. We had this issue where the state government had been very lukewarm lately on the Kangaroo Point pedestrian bridge because they are wanting to put super yachts further upriver than the proposed bridge at Kangaroo Point. Now, I don't know about him, but a 24-metre luxury super yacht with a maximum crew of 13 people, it doesn't exactly scream equitable to you, does it? And we've done the modelling on the cost of the super yacht trial upriver from our proposed Green Bridge at Kangaroo Point. And it would add an additional $140 million to the cost of delivering the bridge. So quite genuinely, councillor Cassidy, if you want to be useful, you should talk to your state Labour colleagues who are proposing this super yacht trial there and let them know that the residents of the city of Brisbane don't support the super yacht trial and they don't support increasing the cost of that bridge to deliver a mooring station for One Percenters. Clearly, I want to just touch on some of councillor Sri's issues as well that he raised. Firstly, he raised the detailed feedback report. As I've said, we can get that to him in time. If we can find a way to anonymise it, happy to release that, no problem. He then also spoke about enabling infrastructure. And I want to be clear, within the Green Bridges budget, within those individual bridges budget, we are doing everything we can to ensure that these bridges aren't just plonked down with no enabling infrastructure to link them in to local connections for walking and cycling. That is absolutely a priority for the administration. We will certainly be doing that. In terms of his comments around the petition, look, reality is that council has invested significantly in public and active transport in and around West End. The area is extremely rich in offerings in terms of public transport and active transport. It's regularly serviced by the City Glider, as he said, at a cost that Brisbane City Council wears, a cost of $1.5 million a year. There's two major train stations in South Bank and South Brisbane. Eight of council's 25 ferry terminals are actually within his ward. West End, South Bank, the Maritime Museum, Thornton Street, Holman Street, Dockside, Mowbray Park. We rebuilt the West End ferry terminal in 2011 at a cost of over $5 million. South Brisbane is serviced by both City Cat and City Hopper services. We've got 10 Speedy Cat Express services from West End running each day. Two of the five new Green Bridges land in his ward. Soon, the Neville Bonner Bridge, which is being delivered by the state government, will land in his ward. Five bridges already benefit the area, including the William Jolly Bridge, the Kuruilpa Bridge, the Victoria Bridge, and the $308 million Gobertown Bridge, which was delivered by this council, as well as the Goodwill Bridge. There's 48 city cycle, sorry, I correct myself, there's 43 city cycle stations. And we've delivered $22 million in signature bikeways in the last term into his ward, as well as the state government delivering the V1 Veloway. It's also one of the most popular areas for Lime and Neuron scooters, not to mention it's within walking distance of the city's heart. So, I mean, this is an area that is so rich in infrastructure, it even has its own Ferris wheel. So I just want to be clear here, when we're talking about public transport access, I actually think councillor Sri's got things around a bit wrong. It's not, the fact, people want to move there because it is already so well-serviced by public transport infrastructure that it is growing. It's not the other way around. It's not that they're moving there and going, oh, this area is so poorly serviced by public transport. I think genuinely, people do know what they're getting into when they're buying West End. They're buying because of the options that they have available to them. So I just think that that point is the wrong way around. But irrespective of that, we haven't ruled out building an additional City Cat and City Ferry Terminal at West End. We haven't done that at all. It is part of our long-term neighbourhood plan for the area, and it's something that I think all councillors would agree we would like to deliver in the future. But I just, as I said in the committee last week, I have a really tough time saying to someone like councillor Adaman, who has to come to this council asking for maxi taxi services to get his residents to and from the shops, some of whom are very elderly, I have a tough time saying, well, councillor Adaman, your residents can't get that maxi taxi. Instead, we've got to build this ferry terminal at West End. So in terms of public... Brisbane residents as possible.
Your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy had a misrepresentation.
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Murphy said, that I said, that council was going back to the drawing board. I in fact said council should go back to the drawing board.
Thank you. All right. I will now put the resolution. All those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And thank you. Please lower your hands. All those against, say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee report, please. Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of May, 2020, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Maddox. The report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 12th of May, 2020, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The report in the Infrastructure Committee last week included a presentation about adaptation by the infrastructure portfolio to COVID-19 restrictions and highlighted amongst other things the strategies that had been established to ensure the health and safety of the Brisbane community, as well as the way the infrastructure staff have adjusted to the ways they're working to ensure projects and programmes are progressing. So it was a look at both internal changes and also public-facing delivery. I mentioned last week in the chamber that in late March, council had switched off almost 1,000 parking metres servicing about 8,000-metre parking spaces across the city and reduced the parking fees at the King George Square car park and Wickham Terrace car park to a daily flat rate. And that had provided a level of financial relief during the height of a pandemic period. But as we're all aware, which is good to see, that we're getting back to business as usual with restrictions beginning to ease. Yesterday, the parking metres were switched back on and car park fees were returned to normal to encourage parking by turnover. Now the businesses are aiming, certainly are aiming to increase their trade. Mr. Chair, in addition to these parking changes, which provided assistance to the Brisbane community, the infrastructure portfolio and our staff have partnered to automate pedestrian crossing buttons. And approximately 95% of staff have been working from home without any discernible decrease in service delivery. We've moved scheduled night works to daytime works wherever possible to lower, because of the lower levels of traffic. There have been extended hours for daytime works, which were permitted by reduced peak hour traffic. And there was a relaxation for inner-city heavy vehicle lockout periods to support construction projects. So these are just, Mr. Chair, a handful of examples of the demonstration of Brisbane Infrastructure's adaptation to COVID-19. Teams and employees have shown exceptional flexibility, innovation and commitment during this time, and I thank them for it. And thanks to their efforts, Brisbane residents and businesses have been better protected and supported. So well done to the infrastructure team for their hard work over the past few months and weeks. Mr. Chair, we considered five petitions in the committee last week. And in order, a request to install traffic calming in Chermside Street Grange, a request to install speed bumps along Youngs Road Hemet and to arrange for the QPS to enforce speed limits, a request to close Coolall Street Upper Kedron to through traffic and only allow local traffic, a request to improve safety access between Chelma and Graceville by installing a staggered zebra crossing, flashing lights and a safety cage at the refuge connecting pedestrian overpass between Honour Avenue and Appell Street, Graceville, and a request to install an LED speed indicator sign on Annie Street in New Farm. I'll leave those items for any debate and respond accordingly as required.
Further speakers? I see no hands. I see councillor Johnston's hand.
Yes, certainly it was up. Thank you so much. I rise to speak on item E and ask that it be taken Seri Adam for voting purposes.
Item E, Seri Adam for voting purposes.
Yes, thank you. Yes, look, I've made several requests for a pedestrian upgrade at this location. And also residents have petitioned for an improvement to their pedestrian facilities at this location. It's actually quite a busy crossing point on Honour Avenue because this is where the rail pedestrian overpass bridge is. And then you can easily access Graceville Memorial Park on the other side of the rail line. So it is a popular spot. People use it to get to school. They use it for recreational purposes. And, you know, we do have a lot of people crossing the road here. The refuge that's in the middle of Honour Avenue is really inadequate. Honour Avenue is a very busy road. It carries about 15,000 vehicles a year. Sorry, I'm sorry. It carries about 15,000 vehicles a day. It's 60 kilometres an hour. It's a very, very busy district access road. The cages that are in numerous locations around Brisbane certainly provide some additional protection for pedestrians. I note, and this is absolutely perverse, and I would draw everybody who's listening attention to the following statement, which if anybody in council wants to follow along, is on page 10, paragraph 63. "In any addition, any errant vehicle striking a fence would increase the potential damage to the vehicle occupants." That's one of council's reasons for not considering a pedestrian safety upgrade. Just, I know councillor Hutton's laughing, and I agree. It's very, very funny. The fact that this council is saying by increasing pedestrian fences, which are extremely common, there's some on Oxley Road, I mean, they're all over Brisbane. So certainly, I think, the failure of council to consider any change whatsoever here is another signal that they're just not interested in active travel improvements around the city. I mean, council's other explanation here also says there's not enough space to allow pedestrians to walk. Of course there is. It's a really, really wide road. It'd be essentially four lanes wide. There's actually quite a lot of space here. So, you know, I just do not accept the explanation that has been given. I've done what I can to look at encouraging vehicles to slow down. We have the SAM signs to the north of this location in Chelma. We also have a slowdown sign to the south of this location and another SAM site to the south of this location on Anna Avenue in Graceville. So, you know, we want to make our suburban areas better for pedestrians to get around. And it is just ridiculous, you know, there must be more than two dozen refuges on my waiting list to be built. I mean, if they went in everywhere, they would slow vehicles down, they provide safer access for pedestrians to move around my local suburbs. I mean, wombat crossings, for God's sake, they're wonderful things. Council won't even consider a debate about them. And meanwhile, staggered zebra crossings, we'll have another debate on that later tonight, and I presume it'll get knocked back in the same way that this is. It is just appalling that council refuses to consider any improvements for active travel in my ward. I mean, it just should not be this hard. These are small, simple projects that are designed to make our neighbourhood safer, and they should be done just as a matter of routine. I mean, there's been no cycling improvements in my ward, you know, apart from $3,000 for the Yorong Pili Deaf Primary School Improvement Project. And there's been millions spent. So we're just not seeing any investment in either pedestrian improvements or cycling improvements. So I'm really disappointed that council won't consider this, given that there are numerous staggered zebras and cages around the city. Even a version of this, like, you know, we put our best foot forward here with what the residents wanted me to do, and this is an online neighbourhood watch group, that what are this issue considered by council? I'll certainly be telling them the response, which is council will do nothing. I don't accept that this is the appropriate way to go. And I'll just say, you know, I've listened to councillor Adams on several occasions tonight, and she thinks by asking for things that we want more and more money to be spent. No, Mr. Chairman, what councillor Adams fails to understand is that we want the money spent fairly around the city. And when you fail to invest in Tennyson Ward and you put it all into McDowell or Enoga or Marchand or Central, that's where there is a lack of equity, transparency and fairness in the way in which council undertakes its allocation of resources. So my concern with this council is that it does not allocate resources fairly. It is not focusing on the important priorities in the local community. important priorities in the local community that I represent, which continues to be improving pedestrian facilities, improving cycling facilities, improving local roads, you know, fixing stormwater drains. I mean, they're all basic things. And, you know, I've been coming in here as an independent for 10 years talking about them. I mean, you must be sick of me talking about the same things over and over again. And I'm just going to keep going. My community elected me to come in here and advocate for these things. I think pedestrian improvements are important. I will not be supporting the do-nothing recommendation that's been put forward by this administration yet again. We need action on pedestrian improvements to promote active travel and safe active travel in Tennyson Ward and in other locations around the city.
For the speakers? I see no hands. I'm councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair, for raising my hand, but sorry if anybody else wanted to speak or thought that would raise their hand. Look, I'll just respond to some of those points made by councillor Johnson, who makes this, as she always tends to, abate all about her. And also railing against council having made these decisions and poor little her. What she's railing against is unfortunately, the manual of uniform traffic devices. Now, we've talked about this before. This is the manual of uniform traffic control devices is the manual by which all engineers have to work when they're asked to look at things. And councillor Johnson well knows this in the response that was provided here. She knows, I believe in her heart, she worked as a spin doctor for an engineering firm, so I presume she does know these things, that you can't do things that aren't endorsed by licensed engineers. And perhaps she should resign her job as a councillor and go for a job as an engineer. And then she'd be able to rail against her mate Mark Bailey and get some of these changes made to the manual by which all engineers are required to follow. But the facts remain, in pressing for a zebra crossing on a 60 kilometre an hour road, she knows that that won't be permitted by that manual. That's the start and finish of it. She made no attempt to request a change to the speed of this road. She said herself that it carries 15,000 vehicles a day and is a busy access road. So, but if councillor Johnson wants to have a crack and put it up to the Speed Management Committee, which is a joint committee to which council participates, the state government participates through TMR and the police to look at requests for reductions in speeds on our roads, she's perfectly entitled to do so, to see if she could make Honour Avenue a 50 kilometre an hour road, and then come in here again to see if this crossing could be made into a zebra crossing, because then it would meet the engineering warrants. That's what this is about. Councillor Johnson, you can sit there and rail against council. You can say it's all about me, you're stopping spending in Tennyson Ward. The facts remain that our officers put up recommendations and responses to the requests that come in based on the manual that they're required to as licensed engineers. And that's what they do. And that's what's in this response.
Thank you. I'll now put the resolution. Items A, B, C, D and F. All those in favour say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
And those against, no? The ayes have it. On item E, all those in favour say aye and raise your hands, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Lower your hands. And all those against, please raise your hand and say no.
No.
Oh.
Thank you. The ayes have it.
Division?
I have a division called by councillor Johnston.
Seconded.
And councillor Griffiths. Please ring the bells.
Thank you councillor Cook, I saw you.
All right. Thank you. All councillors are present. All those in favour of item E, please raise your hand and hold it. Say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. All those voting no, please say no and raise your hand and hold it there so we may count it.
No.
No.
Thank you councillors, please lower your hands. Clacks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 20 in favour and 7 against.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of May 2020 be adopted.
And a second, please. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Howard, to the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 12th of May be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Cunningham?
Yes, Mr Chair, before I talk about last week's committee meeting, I just wanted to provide an answer to a question from councillor Griffiths that he raised with me in committee this morning. Councillor Griffiths asked if we sanitised all the playgrounds when they were reopened. So through you, Chair councillor Griffiths, the state government advised through an email from the Director General of Department of Local Government Racing and Multicultural Affairs, that there are no COVID-related health directives which would require additional cleaning or sanitation of playgrounds. So the presentation now, moving on to that last week, it was about an update on the Downfall Creek Rehabilitation project that we're undertaking with the Port of Brisbane. The Port of Brisbane is investing funds from its off-site stormwater quality scheme in Brisbane with a collaborative on-the-ground project. The project objectives include improving waterway health outcomes, reducing erosion and improving the condition and stability of the reaches of Downfall Creek within Seventh Brigade Park at Chermside. A citywide investigation into erosion and sedimentation completed in 2016 identified that priority sites for rehab included Downfall Creek. Rehab of this site is achievable and by reducing erosion, less sediment will enter Moreton Bay. So the project, which includes bank stabilisation, slope improvements, weeding, riparian planting, will improve fish passage and community access to the area. Currently, a concept design has been prepared and a detailed design is underway. The environmental benefits of the project include the prevention of sediment entering the creek and bay, water quality improvements, improved flora and fauna, including aquatic and terrestrial, and increased resilience to future high-flow events. The social benefits include increased visual amenity and urban cooling, increased safety, potential to engage with the creek environment, increased sense of place and ownership, community pride and community stewardship. In committee, we also had two suburban enhancement fund applications that were passed. Item B in the agenda is a petition asking to keep Victoria Park a golf course, and I will leave debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? I see no hands being raised. Councillor Cunningham, do you have further comments?
No, that's fine. Thank you, Chair.
I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, no and raise your hands. The ayes have it. Councillors, the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee report, please. Councillor Marks? Please turn your microphone on. Councillor Marks, please turn your microphone on.
Sorry, sorry. I had problems trying to turn my microphone on there.
Just your report councillor.
Sorry, yes. I want to bring, in the last week's committee, we had a presentation on graffiti removal. And, oh, sorry.
I need you to remove the resolution for me, please.
Sorry, yes. I move that the meeting that was held on Tuesday, the 12th of May, be taken as read for the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee.
Agreed. It's been moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Tumey, that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee dated Tuesday, the 12th of May 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Marks?
Yes, sorry about that, Chair. Yes, I just want to mention that we had a committee presentation on the graffiti removal, which was well taken by all the members that we had of the committee and presented by Fred Tilden. It was greatly appreciated. We also had a petition from the Winham West, from councillor coming from Gaywood Street about resurfacing in Winham West. If he would like to speak to all that. Other than that, the other issue we had was I had a question on notice this morning from councillor Johnston about regarding the cleaning and sanitising of playgrounds, and I wish to advise the following. Following consultation with the chief health officer, the state advises that there is no COVID-related health directive which would require additional cleaning or sanitation of playground or skate park facilities. Council is expected to deliver there to the usual standards of practice and tending to these types of facilities and can otherwise make their own decisions on any changes to this. So that just finishes that question that councillor Johnson asked this morning. And I'll leave the rest of the debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? I see our councillor coming.
Yes, thanks very much. In relation to graffiti removal, it was a good presentation, but there was a few extra questions I would have liked to ask, like whether the council still does cleaning graffiti off some of the other government instrumentalities. I think they used to do it for places like Telstra and other groups that have things out in the suburbs that get graffitied, and council used to clean it off for them. I think we got paid by them, so I was interested to know whether that relationship still continued. And also, how many members of the graffiti removal teams, the manager said there were somewhere two-person teams and some one-person teams, but I'd just like to know how many FTEs were involved, I guess, in graffiti removal. In relation to item B, the petition, this is a little street where my residents are very determined to get the street resurfaced and also the curb and channel repaired. There's a significant number of young children in the street, and some of the parents and neighbours are concerned about children having falls because of the rough nature of the street. And I call upon the Lord Mayor to provide funding for the resurfacing of Gaywood Street End, the renewal of the curb and channel in this year's budget. Thank you.
Further speakers? I see no hands. Councillor Marks?
Sorry, yes, I nearly turned the video off then. Yes, look, just to answer councillor coming on that point, he did send through some questions after the committee meeting had finished. As I pointed it out to him this morning, we do try and make sure the committee finishes on time. In fact, last week, we were in a couple of minutes over. His first question, actually to the presenter, Mr Tilden, was one of the council officers, somebody else he knew, was actually related to him. So, you know, if he wants to waste his time in question time, asking relationship questions with council officers, that's his business. And we did close the committee a couple of minutes after time was over. So he did send me through a number of questions. In fact, I think there was about eight after the committee had finished. And as we mentioned, as a discussion I had with him offline after the committee, I know it's a trick that he's trying to pull just so that maybe he can try and get all sorts of questions to chairs and councillors after the committee's over. I outlined to him what the position is and the protocol, and he knows what it is. So we're happy to get those questions to him when he asks them in the appropriate manner. Thank you, Chair.
I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And those against, say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Thank you. Councillors, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, please. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the meeting of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee held on the 12th of May 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landis, the report of Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee being dated Tuesday, the 12th of May 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Howard?
Thank you, Chair. Last week, we had a presentation from council's manager of library services on the wonderful work that our libraries team has done in rising to the challenge of COVID-19. Chair, our council officers have worked extremely hard to deliver for the residents of Brisbane, and they've poured their heart and soul into their work. That has never been made clearer than in the past weeks and months, as they have gone above and beyond to keep our city moving forward. A great example of that has been our libraries, which have continued to deliver books to vulnerable members of our community, engaged thousands of residents online through our virtual workshops and events, which continue to press on during these difficult times and bring a little joy into the homes of Brisbane families. It was particularly lovely to see the Lord Mayor helping out our libraries team with one of our lesser-known services that is available to our most vulnerable residents and people that can't leave the home, and this is our Home Library Delivery Service. We've seen an almost 30% increase in the usage of this service in recent times, which is just fantastic. It's all about making sure that people that are stuck at home and are vulnerable can still get access to our library services. And I know that the libraries team certainly appreciated the Lord Mayor lending a hand. And can I say, it was heartwarming just to see the joy in Ms Morris's face when the Lord Mayor hand-delivered her latest parcel of books to support her love of reading. So of course, we were very excited on Saturday to open the doors to our libraries for the first time in almost two months, albeit in a restricted fashion. But still, they are open, and I think it's important for us to celebrate these milestones our city is achieving as we move forward in the road to recovery. So since 9am on Saturday, we have had almost 3,900 residents visit our libraries to pick up any books that they had put on hold. And I remind the chamber that we have waived the 80 cents hold fee for residents. Residents can also continue to return borrowed items through the after-hours shoots. And again, our librarians are doing a fantastic job in working through the over half a million books that are being returned to the libraries to sanitise them and make sure they are safe and clean for residents to borrow again. To date, we have cleaned more than 150,000 returned books, each one going through a strict three-day quarantine process, and it is then thoroughly sanitised before being returned to the shelves. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our library staff for the incredible work they do, and thank residents for their patience as we continue to work together to get through this difficult time. And with that, Mr Chair, I'd like to commend the report to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just very briefly, I would also like to thank all the library staff for their hard work over the past few weeks. I'm obviously based at Fairfield, right next to the Fairfield Library, and I saw how hard the ladies and gentlemen were working in there to clean everything when they closed. And honestly, going in there, it smelt amazing. And they made the decision to open, you know, late last week. So there's a lot of effort in trying to get the arrangements for how to facilitate people coming in and out. And I know, having spoken with them today about how Saturday went, and unfortunately Fairfield Library is not open on Monday, it should be, and we've moved numerous petitions to have it open seven days a week, which the LMP have voted down because it's such an important community hub. So they weren't open yesterday, but in my discussions with them today, they did indicate it has been a little bit slow. At this stage, people are mainly returning books. So I think probably council needs to do some, just some free social media around what we can do with libraries. And I think we need to look at certainly allowing greater use of the libraries. If it's okay for children to go and play on a playground, and they don't require any kind of cleaning whatsoever, why is it not okay for children in, you know, maximum group of 10, to be allowed into the library to browse for a book, set a time limit on it, and allow families to go in and borrow books in person? I can't see why we are not allowing, you know, why we're not allowing that. So I'd be really interested. I note, two councillors have read the same advice from the chief medical officer about playgrounds. I'd be really interested in the chief medical adviser's advice about libraries, because as far as I know... um, advice about libraries because as far as I know, they're okay to be opened and presumably that means used, um, in groups of up to 10 people. Now, it seems councils has interpreted that in a really restricted way, and I would ask that we reconsider that. Um, certainly, you know, we can go into the supermarket and purchase food. We can go into the shops and purchase clothing. We can go into the chemist and purchase personal items, but we can't go into a library and borrow a book. Um, we can't, you know, do something as basic as that. I, I don't, there are some double standards going on here. So I think council needs to have another look at, um, what functionality is allowed under the social distancing restrictions put in place by the state government. And I think that we should be allowing, um, you know, small groups of borrowers, up to 10, um, to come in, um, and borrow books. And I think that could be easily managed with some arrangements, uh, you know, around that. Um, we're going to move to 20 people in June. Um, so again, I'd certainly like to see, um, you know, what I would consider to be an essential service in our community, a library, um, open with more services available, uh, to the public. Um, people are still very home based at the moment and having better access to library facilities would be incredibly worthwhile. So I would just say that, um, we should be looking at, uh, further arrangements to facilitate greater use of our libraries, reflecting, um, the social distancing requirements and maximum numbers, uh, in the space, um, as set down by the chief medical officer.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Listen, I, I'd like to talk on this item as well. I wasn't part of the presentation and I do miss, uh, um, some of these presentations and, uh, but I'd just like to pay tribute to the library staff here at the, uh, at the Anala Library, um, which is where my office is as well. And I believe it's the only library that's, um, uh, has a hallway leading to the council's office, so I'm told. So that was just another layer of complexity when it came to.
Oh, I've got one too, Charles.
Come on.
I'll take that in objection. Um, no, that just led to another layer of complexity for the, uh, for the staff of the library to, uh, deal with the fact that they were going to be opened, uh, for 10 people at a time. But my office is, uh, is open via the phone, uh, and, um, and, uh, and I'll go out to see people from time to time. But, um, the office, the internal office is still closed until at least next week. So I just wanted to say, uh, that they've done a terrific job in the time that, um, they've, uh, and of course, there's a whole bank of windows that I walk in and out and I can see over the last, uh, number of weeks, uh, them busily, uh, as you, as, uh, as, uh, councillor Johnston said, that they're, they're cleaning, they're cleaning everything and they're just getting everything, uh, uh, you know, really, uh, top notch. And, uh, but they also had to contend with the fact that the painters came in, uh, for about a week and painted the ceiling. So that, uh, that was another challenge for them as well. Uh, but, um, now, listen, this library here at Anala, honestly, a punch is well above its weight. Um, it probably has the, the amount of patronage is probably about halfway down the, the numbers when I, when I did a question on notice, uh, last year. And, uh, for its size, uh, it, it really is well used by my community, uh, whether it be from people from Forest Lake or Anala or Durack. Uh, they really love their library and I just want to commend the, uh, the, uh, the staff that actually work in this library. Thank you, Chair.
Further, further speakers. I see no hands. Uh, councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, um, thank the, uh, the speakers for their, um, lovely words to our librarians. They in fact have done the most fantastic job. Just to comment, uh, about the instructions that we are following, which of course are the state government, uh, guidelines. And, uh, we would note that it's a maximum of 10 people, um, that are allowed through to the libraries. And of course, we, um, our professional librarians are working very, very hard within those rules to make sure that we are giving our residents a fantastic experience when they come to the library. Just through you, Mr. Chair, I popped into my local library on Saturday just to see how things were going. And, uh, everyone is very respectful of the social distancing. They're very respectful of the rules. They're very grateful that, that they are able to go and collect their book that they've placed on hold. And, uh, again, I think just to finish off, I'd just like to once again, thank all of the librarians for their fantastic work and recommend it to the chamber.
Thank you. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
For the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Councillors, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee report, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of May, 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 12th of May, 2020, be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Allen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, at the committee last week, we had a, uh, presentation on the Brisbane Local Disaster Management Coordination Centre and the COVID-19 response. And, uh, the presentation covered the organisational structures and frameworks, um, that allows council to continue to function during challenging circumstances such as, uh, that that we've experienced through the, uh, COVID-19 pandemic. The, uh, the key elements of the presentation were the Brisbane Incident Management System framework, and it sort of outlines the structure of the, uh, incident management system, the activation level. So essentially at what levels of criticality do the various, um, engagements kick in? There's a, uh, there's a local disaster coordination centre. So the way that's structured, who the personnel are, what the reporting lines are, what the various elements of that particular coordination centre are. And then we touched upon the COVID-19 response and the phases that they go through, um, to, to address, uh, the responses to COVID, the framework that they use, and also the planning that they put in place to, uh, to address these things. It's all focused on ensuring that council can continue to function under the most difficult and trying of circumstances. In addition to that, uh, presentation, we also had the bank and investment reports presented for February and March, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers. I see no hands. Councillor Allen. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hands.
Uh, aye.
You and those against, no and raise your hands. The ayes have it. Councillors, can I please draw your attention to the consideration of a notified motion? Councillor Johnston, would you please move the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that this council, one, redesigns and relocates the draft Appell Street Graceville zebra crossing to outside the piano shop to retain the popular drop off zone and as much, uh, on-street car parking as possible whilst providing better pedestrian crossings for local school students, commuters and residents. And two, redirects the $74,000 currently allocated to the Oxley Road Quarry Road Sherwood line marking project that, uh, that council has cancelled to install the zebra crossing.
Seconded.
Councillor Griffiths, all right, it's been moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that the resolution as presented, uh, be considered. Councillor Johnston, would you please speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for many years now, and multiple times today, um, I've been advocating for, uh, better pedestrian facilities for residents in Tennyson Ward. Um, we have a really fantastic, um, you know, uh, community out in, uh, Tennyson, uh, beautiful suburbs. Um, it's great for walking, uh, but there are really limited pathways, safe crossing points, and we are really heavily constrained, um, with east-west pedestrian movements, um, because of, uh, the arterial roads, uh, the river and the rail line. Um, so, uh, one of the safe pedestrian crossing points, um, from the eastern side of Graceville to the western side of Graceville, um, is the underpass at the Graceville Rail Station. And, uh, when the state government upgraded the, or talked about upgrading Graceville Rail Station maybe five or six years ago, I first raised, um, the need for a safe crossing point across Appell Street, uh, to the station and to the underpass, which leads across to the Graceville Shopping Precinct on, uh, on an, on, on a avenue. At that time, council's traffic engineers told me absolutely councillor, when the rail station upgrade is undertaken, uh, we'll put pedestrian facilities in. Well, the state did their bit. They put in the, um, the, uh, station upgrade, including new footpaths on the frontage. Um, and, uh, certainly that has improved, um, public transport by the improvements to universal access at the station. However, um, my requests about, uh, looking at, oh, look, I don't really care. I'd prefer a zebra crossing obviously, but a refuge or build outs or whatever it might be, uh, to council were ignored for several years. And, uh, I got to the point where it looked like I had to do another petition. Um, and I think nearly 500 residents signed the petition last year, or almost a year ago, um, calling for the zebra crossing, uh, to be installed. Um. Some months ago, council sent me, um, a draft plan for the crossing, uh, which removed the parking on the eastern side of Appell Street, uh, outside of the old station master's cottage site and the drop off zone, uh, on the station frontage. Now, anybody who knows this area knows that, um, with so many private schools located on the north side of the river, that hundreds of local families will drop their children at the station, uh, and then they go on to wherever their business is, whether it's work or home or shopping or whatever it might be. So the drop off and pick up, uh, zone at Graceville Station is one of, um, the best located ones, um, and also extremely well used. So to be honest, when I was sent the draft plans, um, you know, in February, I was quite shocked, uh, that council wanted to get rid of the parking and the drop off zone. Now, certainly I appreciate there'll be some loss of parking, uh, with this project, but at this point, to remove the drop off zone, to propose no alternate facilities, um, really to me does not give any credence to understanding how people use the station. The benefits the drop off zone provides to local families and particularly those families with children, we want them being dropped off, um, so they can get on the train and they can get to school or uni or work. Um, it is so essential. Um, you can live up to two kilometres away from this rail station and still be in Graceville or Sherwood or Tennyson. Um, it's too far for everyone to walk. So it's really critical that we maintain, uh, drop off, uh, facilities. So when I got the draft, um, uh, the draft plans, I did write back to council and I was, I was pretty shocked, to tell you the truth, about what they, uh, proposed. Um, and, um, I did, uh, ask them for changes. Um, I did outline all of my concerns, and this is back on the 20th of February. Um, and I'll just, um, point out that I asked for the following five things. Provide a safe crossing point, um, uh, and the importance of that. Um, by relocating it to outside the piano shop, um, it's the narrowest part of the street, build outs would not be required, just new ramps. Um, that side of Verney Road, uh, um, between Verney Road and Appell Street links, uh, all the way down to the church, um, on, uh, Oxley Road and the zebra crossing. So people crossing from the low side of Graceville across Oxley Road on the existing zebra crossing and then up Verney Road to the station could stay on the same side of the street and then cross Appell Street, um, outside the piano shop and access the station on the footpath. So it's a really simple, um, active movement, um, that is well supported with good links. Um, so I pointed all that out to council. Um, I pointed out that it would retain the kiss and go, uh, zone, that parking that they are proposing would be lost. Um, there is already a yellow line and there is some two hour parking. So there may be some impacts, um, outside the piano shop or on that corner near the piano shop. Um, but there's no parking on the other side of Appell Street because that's where the road narrows. Um, and two, um, there are already an extended yellow line there as well. So there's good sightlines, really clear sightlines there. Um, it, it's, yeah, um, and it's cheaper. It would be cheaper. So on the 20th of February, I put all my views to the council officers and they confirmed they got them, but I heard nothing back. Um, and that really disappointed me because for many years I have been pushing for this, uh, upgrade. Um, I offered constructive comments about what needed to change and months passed without council officers getting back to me. Now, I know the Lord Mayor's not here tonight, um, and he often says, well, councillor, why didn't you raise these things? Not only did I raise it with the council officers on the 20th of February, I then followed up with the council officers on the 23rd, uh, on the 20th, no, that was the, that one. I did follow up with the council officers again, uh, in April, uh, and said, what's happened? Why have I not, uh, had a response? Um, I've heard nothing in response to that request either. So it got into May. Um, this is my third request. I wrote to the Lord Mayor on the 11th of May. Now, that's only a week ago, to be fair, a week and a bit ago. Um, and I raised my concerns about the fact the officers hadn't bothered getting back to me, had ignored my constructive feedback as, uh, the local councillor and asked him to intervene to make sure that this refuge actually got delivered. Now, I've listened with great interest today, uh, to councillor Murphy, who's in charge of this part of council, and I look forward to his participation in this debate. He's indicated repeatedly today how important it is to have consultation with the local councillor. He wants councillor Adaman to have consultation on pedestrian facilities in his ward. He wants, uh, councillor Hutton, uh, councillor Hutton, I think, um, yeah, councillor Hutton to have consultation on pedestrian facilities, uh, in her ward. Um, I don't understand why, one, um, I'm being ignored and it's not about me, it's about the community that I represent. This other thing that the LMP, you know, keeps going on about, um, is that it's all about me. No, it's not. I'm here as the spokesperson for the community that I represent. 500 of them want a safe crossing point outside one of the busiest rail stations in my community. Um, it's a really important project.
I let him up here.
The motion.
Here, 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 here.
Thank you. The motion for us today, ask council to undertake, uh, changes to the design and look at an alternate location. I note that three months have gone past since I asked for this to happen with multiple requests to senior council officers and the Lord Mayor, and there's been no action. I look forward to whatever explanation they're going to come up with today. Um, and two, they cancelled this project at, uh, Oxley Road and, and Quarry Road, not one I've ever asked for and not one in 12 years that a single resident has ever asked me for, was going to paint a right turning lane onto Oxley Road into Quarry Road. That's not what residents want in my area. So I want to make sure the funding for that project gets redirected to the important project of providing better pedestrian facilities for residents to active, to, um, access public transport. I urge all councillors to support the motion.
Yes.
Further speakers. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I wish to speak in relation to this motion. I see from the wording of the motion, direct council officers to develop a zebra crossing in accordance with the local councillor's wishes. I'm advised that such projects are required to be signed off by a registered professional engineer of Queensland prior to being constructed. So I would be concerned to support a motion to direct council officers to undertake something which we do not know is feasible. I understand councillor Johnston wrote to the Lord Mayor a few days before lodging this motion and he has since responded saying that he was happy for the council officers to investigate her alternative design and report back to her, that it is not possible for a comment to be made at this point, as we do not know if her preferred option is feasible and would be signed off by an engineer. Also, there's been no community consultation on any of these options and there is no cost known for the project to know if the money referred to in this motion is a suitable funding source for future works. Until these actions are undertaken, I cannot support this motion. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. I see no further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
All right. I thank councillor Hutton for her participation in this debate. Um, and I'm sorry, I am going to respond to this. She is brand new and shiny. Um, but what a disgrace the LMP are. The chairman of the Public and Active Transport Committee, I don't even think he's in the meeting, so he couldn't be bothered to respond. The chairman.
He's there, he's there.
Okay.
Right.
Please, please pay attention to the matter at hand, councillor Johnston.
Yeah, well, I. Yeah, well, I, I am, I'm, yep. Um, the chairman of the Infrastructure Committee couldn't be bothered to respond and the Lord Mayor couldn't be bothered to respond. I've certainly had no response at all from the Lord Mayor, so I don't know where councillor Hutton got that idea from, but he has not responded to me. Um firstly, the motion asks council to redesign and relocate um the uh zebra crossing. Let me be clear, engineers would do that, not me. Not me, I'm not proposing, it doesn't say I will redesign and do this. I'm expecting that the council um engineers in the T and O Department of Council will undertake the work. That's why I've been suggesting a course of action to them for the past three months. And let's be clear again, they've not responded to me at all. So I was asked for my feedback, I was sent as the local councillor a copy of the draft plan and I expect um that those comments will be taken into account. They just were ignored and no further action was taken whatsoever, despite me following up on multiple occasions. I fully expect councillor Hutton through you, Mister Chairman, um that there will be public consultation about the proposed design. But we as councillors are here to provide guidance to the officers about local information and how it can effectively create a project that will be successful in our community. If council wants to put out the draft plan that takes away the drop and go zone outside Graceville Station, they should put it out tomorrow and you watch hell on earth rain down on uh the L N P and I reckon they should go for it. It'll be just like um up on uh Doornock Terrace. I can tell you now, it was as bad as an idea as that. Secondly, if council is not using money allocated into a project in my ward um that I didn't ask for, that no local residents asked for, then that money can be redo uh redirected successfully today um to progress the zebra crossing. Um, there is no reason that it cannot be repurposed uh for that. Um, it may be that the zebra crossing will cost more, that's fine, we'll have to get further money down the track. Um, but zebra crossings are not expensive and there are only ramps required at this location, so this should not be an expensive project in any way, shape or form. So I thank councillor Hutton for reading out the pre-prepared lines that she's been asked to do today. I feel extremely sorry for her that she has been used in this way um by the Lord Mayor, by the Public and Active Transport Chair who could not be bothered to address this issue, or the Infrastructure Chairman who could not be bothered to address this issue. I'm asking for council officers to do their job. A full decision of council called on this zebra crossing to be designed, the motion before us today asked them to do just that. It does not, in any way, shape or form, as councillor Hutton has implied, and whoever the brains trust is, um you know, uh sitting there uh bludgeon on the blind side, um uh doesn't ask that I do it, it asks that the council officers do their job and that's what I expect and that's what my residents expect. Um, so I call on all councillors to support this motion. Um, it is just unacceptable that a full decision of um council saying that they would do a zebra crossing will just be ignored. It is unacceptable that council officers can ignore repeated feedback um from me as the local councillor and it is unacceptable that the L N P um ignore five hundred residents who want a safer crossing point. Um, you know, I, this is a really, really simple project, it should be a really straightforward one. I expect council to redesign this, taking into account feedback from me on behalf of the uh community, put it out for public consultation and see what we get. Because if they put it out the way it is now, I can tell you it would be Armageddon. So I'm really, really disappointed that the newest councillor has been sent out to take the um friendly fire um from me um and try and say why we can't have a zebra crossing redesigned, redesigned by councils' traffic engineers, um so it reflects um the needs of my local community. I call on all councillors uh to support this motion. Um, it is a sensible one that will lead to a practical outcome for residents in my ward. We want people to be able to move safely around the community I represent. There are two active travel schools really close by, Graceville and Christ the King. The underpass is so well used by people going between the shops and their homes. Um, it is well used by rail patrons, we want people on the trains. Um, we just need safe crossing points. The behaviour that I see here every time I'm campaigning here is dangerous, it is absolutely dangerous. We need safe crossing points um to facilitate public and active transport, this is an absolutely no brainer, absolutely no brainer. It does not cost council an extra cent. All I'm saying is money from one project that councils has cancelled, that I never asked for, goes towards a project that council supports, but we just need redesigned. And the fact that the L N P are unprepared to even enter into discussion to allow a really practical project to proceed reflects so poorly on them. The Lord Mayor claims all the time that no one's got any agenda here. Week after week in this council, for ten years, I've put motions up, calling for pedestrian improvements, backflow valves, better drainage, I mean, I have an agenda. Um, the L N P are the people who have no agenda for Tennyson Ward and every single time block it. So councillor Hutton, through you Mister Chairman, I'll just say, I hope you never asked for a pedestrian crossing in your ward. Um, because I, I really hope I will not be beat tricks kiddo and just vote against it, I really hope that I will give it some consideration rather than saying, gee councillor Hutton asked for that, so I'm not gonna do it. Let me tell you, our residents deserve better from this L N P administration, they deserve to have good infrastructure um that delivers the safety and the accessibility to public and active transport that is so vitally important in our city. And finally, for anybody listening at home, the Lord Mayor's absent. The chairman of Public and Active Transport couldn't be bothered to speak to it and the chairman of Infrastructure couldn't be bothered to speak to it. So this is an important local project and they're just not interested. I say to every single Brisbane resident who is out there listening and watching, these are the useless people that you just elected.
One of order Mister Chair.
One of order to you councillor Adams.
I just have a, can I ask you a question as a point of clarification?
Sure.
Uh, is it actually correct, and I'm, I'm not sure if councillor Johnson is misleading the chambers, that if a participant is not actually on video, that they're not actually absent, they are actually in the chamber, just not being shown on video?
Uh, my view would be that if I can't see you, then you're not in the chamber. Would be my, my view.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
With you?
Aye.
Is all those no, say no and raise your hand.
No.
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 Noes have it.
Division.
Got a division called by councillor Johnston, councillor Griffiths, please ring the bells.
Aim on you lot. The letter from the Lord Mayor just turned up. Actually, it's six. What a joke.
So. It did go to standing off stage, just sort of.
Please tick the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of the resolution, please say aye and raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Please lower your hands, all those voting no, please say no and raise your hand and hold it there so it may be seen.
No.
Please lower your hands. Plax, please read the result.
Mister Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and twenty against.
Thank you, the noes have it. Councillors, are there any uh, are there any petitions? Councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thanks Chair, I have a petition which I believe is with the committee people uh requesting uh traffic lights or speed bumps at the intersection of Adam Street, Loftus Street and Bar Place Streets, Deegan.
Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you Chair, I have a petition from a resident in Bridgeman Downs to do with um cycle paths and pedestrian pathways.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you Mister Chair, I have a petition relating to request for uh safe social distancing while exercising during COVID nineteen restrictions on our footpaths.
Councillor Adaman.
Thank you Chair, I have a petition requesting council consider relocating the proposed three hoop basketball court from Acuna Street, Kenmore.
Councillor Howard.
Yes Mister Chair, I have a petition requesting we extend the New Farm Riverball past Howard Smith Wharves.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you Mister Chair, I have a petition um supporting reduction of on street parking within Headley Avenue, Nunda.
I see no further hands, may I please have a, a resolution to accept the petitions? Councillor Landers.
Mister Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye and raise your hands? All those say no and raise your hands? The ayes have it, thank you. Councillors, uh general business, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? Are there any matters of general business? Anyone, councillor Cassidy?
Uh, thanks very much Chair, I just want to um uh talk tonight, make a few remarks about National Volunteering Week. Uh, each year we celebrate Volunteering Week and say thanks to those uh who give so much of their time to communities right around Australia, making them a better place. Uh, but Volunteering Week, like so many others at the moment, uh is a little different, but no less important. Uh, the theme for this year's National Volunteering Week is changing communities, changing lives. And this theme is so very apt at the moment. The way in which our community interacts and operates has fundamentally changed with the reality of COVID, uh but that has also seen ordinary people step up and do extraordinary things for others. No doubt all of us have uh seen individuals and community based organisations who have stepped up over the last few months. I hosted a Zoom meeting, and not unlike this one, with a few of our community centres and service organisations last week, uh and the staff and volunteers at these places, whether it was Sandbag, Zilmia Community Centre, Jabberoo, Kabingai or our local R S Ls, really are on the front line of serving the community at the moment. They're doing it tough, but we know that the work they are doing is making it easier for others in our community. In this line of work, we are uh often surrounded by volunteers, many of whom will be working full time and giving to their communities in their precious spare time. More often than not, those people work for us. Uh, people volunteer because they want to change their community and every day those people change lives. So to everyone who continues to give their time, we say thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you Mister Chair, I would like to speak tonight um on Labour hypocrisy regarding libraries. It appears that the Australian Labour Party councillors like to tell fairy tales reminiscent of Pinocchio about what they did with libraries when they were in administration in this place. So tonight I would like to take this opportunity to provide the chamber with the truth rather than the fictional perspective that has been perpetuated by the A L P. So let's firstly go back to the days of nineteen ninety six. This was when the Australian Labour Party administration in this place closed the Acacia Ridge Library. Then in nineteen ninety eight, not happy with closing just one library, they closed another, the Ithaca Library. Not happy with two library closures, they then made a decision to demolish the building, which not only contained the Acacia Ridge Library, but also the Acacia Ridge Ward Office. Then you have a quick comparison to what has happened for the people of Brisbane under the L N P administration. Well, we've had seventy two million dollars invested in council's thirty three libraries. We've seen the refurbishment of Ash Grove, Stones Corner and Sandgate Libraries. We've seen a new library in Brackenridge and there are upgrades planned for Everton Park, Zilmia and Anala. So. I was also concerned about how we deal with growth suburbs, particularly in Calumbar Wall and Ward and before that Parkinson Ward. So at my request on behalf of constituents, when I was the councillor for Ca- Parkinson Ward, I liaised with the manager of libraries and we had the mobile library commence servicing Forest Lake. As I also have the newly developing libraries now of Polara and Heathwood, I've also requested once again the manager of the council libraries to give due consideration to whether or not the mobile library can start visiting these suburbs to gauge interest. And this is real action for the people in the suburbs of Brisbane. Unlike the supposed stunt petition that came from the Australian Labour Party candidate during the election period. Well, let's have a look at that petition. How many people were on it? A total of twenty six. How many actually lived in the Calumbar Ward? I can show you on two hands, exactly ten. And when you have a look at this list, it reads just about like a Australian Labour Party branch list because some of them are known to us and, you know, they live in suburbs that stretched as far as uh Trafalgar in Victoria, Caboolture in the north, all the way across to Saint Lucia and Fig Tree Pocket in the west.
No, there's no Labour people in the western suburbs.
Hardly, hardly, hardly people that would really be benefiting from a library in Calumbar Ward. But let's get back to the truth of the matter. And I like to go and really reinforce the facts in my own mind and make sure that I can see it through these historical documents. So I have in my hands the structural, you can't see it on the, the Zoom, but the structural overview of the Acacia Ridge Library that was, an in, an inspection was taken out by a Mister P Shaw and Mister A Stairs on the twenty fourth of May nineteen ninety six. And the recommendations that they made, there were twelve observations that they made. Items five to twelve could be addressed under general maintenance. Items one and two didn't need any rectification because the north wall showed no signs of settlement or distress and the west wall was in good condition. Item three, which was the south wall, was the wall that needed repair and as they recommended, it should be rebuilt as soon as possible. And item three, and I quote, will, sorry, item four will be corrected when item three is addressed. So that was out of the structural overview and this was a building that was only built in nineteen seventy seven. So there were works that were needed to modify it in nineteen ninety one to assist in stabilisation, so that was done, but again, five years down the track, we've still got a situation. But then I go to a memo from the then CEO, um and I'm looking here at the tenth of November, uh sorry, tenth of September nineteen ninety six. And Jude Munro writes, I support this approach. Councillor Bianchi supports this action. What was the action you asked? Oh, to close the Acacia Ridge Library and use a temporary library in the car park or ask residents to give, get directions to the Anala, Coopers Plains or Sunnybank Hills Libraries. So that's what they did. The cost of putting up this particular temporary library back in nineteen ninety six was seventy six thousand two hundred dollars, not a small sum in those days. But then, when we actually. But then, when we actually go a little bit further forward, we go to the E and C submission. Civic Cabinet of 23rd of June 1998, this document went to Civic Cabinet, and it sets out the net asset value on the council's asset register for the Acacia Ridge Library is currently $508,000. That was back in 1998. So translating it to today's figures using the inflation calculator, that equates to $799,052.83 in 2020 dollars. But due to the substandard condition of the building, it's unlikely to be saleable.
Owen, there's a point of order. Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, Mr Chairman, I'm just very concerned about councillor Owen revealing confidential information from E and C. Is that allowed?
I was not, I did not believe that information was confidential, but of course I don't know what people say before they speak in general business. However, I know that councillor Owen understands the rules very well, and I trust that she would not have made an error in this instance. Councillor Owen.
Are you sure? Because...
I have to have faith in all of you. I do it all the time.
Well, just to be clear, Mr Chairman, the meeting local law do require you to make a determination about whether something is confidential? And I'm not aware that any E and C reports prior to just recently were a matter of public record. So I just raise it because there are positive obligations on us.
All I'll say to councillor Owen is please, if you have revealed confidential figures, please cease doing so. However, as I say, in this instance, I will have to rely on councillor Owen, as I rely on many of you to be straight with me. And councillor Owen, please continue.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I reaffirm that the figure quoted was from council's asset register, and the asset register is documented on the council's balance sheet, which is detailed in the financial statements and the budget documents each year. So the fact, and there was also reports of these figures that were in the local media as well. So the fact of the matter is that when you have got a building with over half a million dollar worth of value in its, in the asset register, the interesting thing is that why would you want to be knocking this down? And the secondary factor here is that...
You could sell it. The LMP would sell it.
Councillors, please resist the urge to interject. It's getting late, and it's general business. Can we just get through these, please? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And at the end of the day, this is about what the hypocrisy of the Labor administration of the day did. They determined that when the recommendations came through from the reports, from the engineers who assessed the building, nowhere in those documents, nowhere in those recommendations, did it say the entire building should be demolished? Only one wall needed to be repaired. So the decision was made by the Labor Civic Cabinet to go ahead to demolish this council asset that was worth over a half a million dollars in 1998, the equivalent of nearly $800,000 today. So I'll just go into what the community thought of that at the time, and I'll read some of the comments that they made. Headline, nobody is laughing. Brisbane City Council has closed and bulldozed the Acacia Ridge Library. Someone chose the month of November, which was Literature Month, for all of this to take place. Is this some kind of sick joke? Then another headed, library closure disgusts. I'm writing to voice my disgust at the recent closure and subsequent demolition of the Acacia Ridge Library. It was ironic that Peter Beatty recently urged all parents to read to their children, and by the end of that week, the local library was gone. So when we're talking about all of this, this is the Labor Party's history in libraries. And I quote from another article that has also quoted the former councillor Hinchcliffe, which was in the Southern Star on the 5th of August 1998. It says, council said structural damage and low patronage led to the decision to close the library. Councillor Hinchcliffe said it was impossible to build a new library at Acacia Ridge. He would prefer budget money to be spent on upgrading Sunnybank Hills Library, which had a greater catchment area. And then there's another headed, library closure. I've read with great interest the reasons for closing the Acacia Ridge Library, and there seems to be a great deal of confusion. Read the cost of rectifying structural work. In one report, there is a quote of $375,000, then the quote increased to $600,000. That's a huge inflation figure. When we're talking about that $375,000, that was actually the cost of buying all the new books that they were talking about to reinstate it, if they went ahead with reinstating it. But let's follow on with that. What's more, $600,000 would really, would buy a really fantastic prestige home, let alone a simply, simple library. Something is not quite right here. Councillor Sorely said that $600,000 would not be a good use of money to rebuild.
Thank you. Are there any further matters of general business? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise just briefly to speak on the Graceville rail crossing and councillor Hutton's comments, and I may have some remarks on libraries at the end. I'll try to be very brief. Firstly, can I just say, how appalling is our Lord Mayor? While I was speaking in this debate, an email went through to my office with the letter that councillor Hutton was referring to. So he briefed her, got his staff to write her a speech, gave her the contents of the letter about the Graceville Zebra Crossing before he had the courtesy to provide it to me. Now, I wrote to him in good faith. He said to me in our meeting last year, if you have issues, come to me. I took him at his word. I did. What has he done? Number one, he's made a mockery of that by providing a response to a brand-new councillor with no interest in this matter, who's had lines written for her. He provided that response to her before he had the courtesy to provide it to me. Now, I would think that most people in Brisbane would think that is incredibly rude. And personally, I think it's incredibly rude. I think it is a poor reflection on the Lord Mayor that he feels that that kind of behaviour, where he gives information about a project in my ward that I've asked him about, to another councillor to argue against what I'm doing. Now, the really interesting thing is, the Lord Mayor is saying he's happy for the officers to go back and redesign the crossing. So I don't know what's going on with the LMP at the moment. Maybe he's got the idea in his head that the drop in his vote around the city may be something he needs to arrest. Because clearly, the rest of the LMP have not got that idea in their head whatsoever. So for all the residents of Brisbane who are out there watching tonight, this is the kind of man the Lord Mayor of Brisbane is. He briefs another councillor on their response to me, to a matter I've asked him about of importance to our community. He briefs her and provides her with information about the response before providing it to me. What a delightful person our Lord Mayor is. Secondly, briefly on libraries. I just want to thank councillor Owen. I did laugh a little bit through her presentation, and I'll approach it in a different way. I just want to thank councillor Owen for that deep dive into history. I mean, she's been sitting on the blind side for some period of time now, and I'm so pleased to see her come out of the gates raring to go with a hugely topical interest issue in her ward that she wants to champion. I mean, I would have thought the 13% drop in her margin out there in Calenvale might have been a bit of a wake-up call that she needed to focus on local issues in her community, but no. She's chosen a different approach, and that approach appears to be to talk about things from 26 years ago. I don't even think councillor Cumming was here back then, and he's been here a really long time. So maybe he'll interject, maybe he'll correct me. I think he was saying the other day he'd been there 25 years, but I don't even reckon councillor Cumming's been here this long. So, you know, I have no idea about all of these libraries. I don't know if for some reason a new one at Acacia Ridge was promised. I have no idea 26 years ago what happened, why. You know, it's a very, very long time ago. But again, I just want to place on the record my thanks to councillor Owen for her insightful, in-depth presentation about the history of the Acacia Ridge Library from 1978 to 1994. I thought that was fantastic. I don't know whether she wants to put it into a pamphlet or a book, but I think that would be extremely worthwhile so that she could hand that out around Calenvale Ward, and I'm sure it will help her at the next election to increase her margin.
Further speakers? Further matters of general business? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight I'm really excited to share a story about two local police officers from Dove Way Ward, and thank them for going above and beyond for our community out here. A few weeks ago, our local, sorry, our local Hemant Police Beat officers got a tip-off regarding a disturbance. When senior constables arrived, they were met by junior officer Lewis. The crime scene of footprints on the pathway and what looked like bullet holes in the front door had already been called and off to them with crime scene tape. Very quickly though, the job was turned out to be the best day that ever attended as junior officer Lewis informed them that it was his seventh birthday. Lewis was wearing a Queensland Police Junior Officer shirt, and in no time that senior constables attained all Lewis wanted was a police-themed birthday party. Senior constables were only too happy to help Lewis celebrate, including giving Lewis a seat in the patrol car and a flash of the blue and red lights. Junior Officer Lewis then shared a special-made Queensland Police-style birthday cake with his new friends from the Hemant Police Beat. Congratulations and thank you to those two officers for this, and their superiors at the Wynnham Police Station for making Lewis's seventh birthday extra special and memorable. Finally, I also want to bring to everyone's attention the Queensland Community Support Policing Group. They sell QPS-endorsed junior officer polo shirts, as Lewis had, caps and other items to fund support services to all of our members of the Queensland Police Service in times of trauma and emergency. So thank you.
Further general business? Councillor Strunk.
There we go. Thank you, Chair. Listen, councillor Cassidy did an excellent job in reminding us of Volunteer Week. And, but I just wanted to add a little bit of context to what he said in regards to my local ward. And I did speak on a number of these organisations a couple of weeks ago, and the great work they're doing during this pandemic in isolation that we were all suffering. And really, and I think like a lot of other councillors here, we really miss interacting weekly, if not daily, with our volunteers that support so much that happens in our ward. So I wanted to take some little time just to highlight a few of those groups and/or individuals who, by the way, would have been, we have since 2006, the local member and councillor, fine, but Anna Stacey Palashay, the local member for Anala, and Milton Dick when he was the Richlands Ward councillor, initiated the Queensland Day Awards in the, in the local ward here. And we would actually be undertaking the process of identifying our terrific volunteer base and, and for, for an award for this year. But unfortunately, of course, the pandemic is visiting us, and that probably won't happen because we used to get together in a, you know, for a morning tea and, and, and actually celebrate the fact that we have some unbelievable volunteers. Now, the, the groups, of course, that capture some of these volunteers, we do have some individuals that are actually out there that are not part of a, a particular volunteer group, but individually work for, for the community as a volunteer. And, and, but I wanted to highlight a couple of those. Roslyn, who's just an Anala resident, who's taken upon herself to, to interact with the, with the elderly people within her street. She goes there just to make sure that they, if they need anything, whether it be medicine or food or anything. And she's been doing that since the isolation restrictions took place. And I just want to, I don't want to probably give her a surname because she could be inundated with requests. But another one that's part of a big group, the Musical Morning Tea, which has been going for over 30, no, 40 years here in Anala. Shirley, Shirley Snyder, his, is, is, is mother to that group, believe it or not. I don't think she's the oldest person in the group, but she seems to be the mum. Anyway, during this isolation, which they can't meet, they've, after 40 years they can't meet, she's been contacting the members of the Musical Morning Tea. They do, they do a lot of work with disabled kids as well, which is just terrific. And John Mellidge from the Anala Bush Care Group, again, they used to do, they used to do a lot of work in the, in the Kev Hooper Park as a collective, but since the isolation, they haven't been able to do all that much. But what he's been doing was taking wildlife fauna and for photographs, and we've been able to put them up on social media. And that's the way he sort of contributes to trying to keep, give people something nice to look at. So, so I suppose a bit of a distraction for them while they're isolated in their homes. We have some terrific businesses as well that do volunteer their time outside of working hours to undertake work in the community. Certainly Ray Wyatt at Forest Lake, they do some, they do some great work. And, but they're, but they're not the only real estate company in the area that does great work as a volunteer outside of their own working hours. Simply Bliss, which is the coffee, coffee shop just on the lake in the old project office. They, they, they've been, they've been doing their thing. They've been able to trade throughout the isolation in a, in a minor way, of course. But they give a great, great community benefit to the people that walk around the lake because they'll stop in for coffee. So the routine, their, their normal routine hasn't been too far disrupted in regards to that, which is, which is really good for my community. Listen, there's so many others that I could talk about, whether it be the Vietnamese Community Chapter with Dr Bowie, Q1 and Vincent Do. Again, we have a very large, as councillors, and I've said it before, we have a very large Vietnamese community. Many thousands and thousands of Vietnamese. A lot of them are elderly and they really need help during this period. And the chapter has actually, has, has really ramped things up to make sure that they're safe, that they get everything that they need. Because they can't, they, they normally come together at least once a week, a lot of these groups, but they haven't been able to do that. So they really are, we're really feeling isolated. So the chapter is doing some terrific work in that area. My local, of course, the churches aren't able to meet, the congregations aren't able to meet. And, and which has really been difficult, of course, for the Red Shield Appeal people. I have two Salvation Army churches within, or centres within my, within my ward, and they're doing it tough. But, but they're still out there reaching out to the community. They're still giving hampers, they're still giving counselling. And, and they just continue to do some unbelievable work. But again, the Queensland Day Awards, it's really sad that we're not going to do it this year, but hopefully it will be back next year. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Is that councillor Marks? Are you putting your hand up? No? All right. I see no hands. All right. Good night, everybody. Declare the meeting closed. Thank you.